Good morning and welcome to this special concurrent meeting of the Oakland City Council. Before I call roll, I will go over speaker card instructions. If you would like to speak on any agenda item on this agenda, please fill out a speaker's card before the item is called or hour and a half from the start of this meeting. This meeting was called at 9:00 a.m., so that would be 10:30 a.m. this morning. You can fill out a speaker's card by going to the table at the front where the clerk representative is seated. If you're looking to fill out a card online, that time has passed as they were due 24 hours from the start of this meeting. On roll for this meeting are Councilmembers Brown, Councilmember Fife, Councilmember Gao, Councilmember Houston, Councilmember Unger, Councilmember Wong, and Councilmember Ramachandran, who will be sharing this meeting. Showing five members present and three members excused. Your first item on this agenda is item three. I'm sorry, did you have any announcements today?
No, Happy Election Day. After this meeting, if you haven't voted yet, that is an option to you. And looking forward to getting through some important items today. Thank you.
And starting with item three on special orders of the day, item 3.1, receiving information report on Caltrans Vision 980 and Interstate 580 access studies in the city of Oakland. And I'm showing no speakers on this item.
Is anyone from the city administration prepared to present on this?
In correction, we do have one speaker on this item.
To the city administrator, should we wait for a speaker or can we come back to this? Okay, then in the next item, we'll change the order and come back to this. Thank you.
Noting we will come back to item 3.1, going to item four, modifications to the agenda procedural items.
Thank you. To the administration, I believe there's a change that you all would like to make?
Through the chair, yes, we would request that the item be pulled for further consideration at this time.
Which item?
Item number... Yeah, the 27th Street. Item number eight, 27th Street, complete street construction award contract.
Thank you. And I believe we need a full vote of council to officially pull this off. I will make the motion. And to the administration, is this to pull it off and put it on the pending list with no date specific or move it to a future council meeting?
Through the chair, we request we move to a future council meeting, likely the next meeting that you all have scheduled.
So through the chair, the next city council meeting would be December 2nd. Second.
So the vote would be to pull the item and then there'd also be a scheduling motion for the full council would be scheduling this item to the December 2nd meeting?
On consent, yes.
Through the chair, to the city attorney, is there a motion to pull the item, to withdraw and reschedule to December 2nd?
On consent.
On consent. There was a motion to remove item eight on this agenda and schedule to December 2nd. I will read item eight. Item eight is the 27th Street Complete Streets Construction Contract Award. It was adopted resolution awarding a construction contract to redact construction for the 27th Street Complete Streets Project, project number 1003978. The lowest responsible and responsive bidder in accordance with project plans, specifications and state requirements, and what contractors bid in the amount of $10,418,000. I'm sorry, $18,573.50. And as opposing appropriate sequel findings, there was a motion by Councilmember Ramachandran, second by Councilmember Brown, to withdraw this item and reschedule it to December 2nd.
And Madam Clerk?
On consent, I'm sorry.
The body will still hear the speakers when we get to the side.
Yes, I was gonna say that, yes. And just with regular practice, as this item was removed in this meeting, we will still hear speakers on that item. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
No.
Councilmember Gao? Councilmember Houston is excused. Councilmember Unger?
Can we get some clarification on why this is being pulled?
Through the chair, to Councilmember Unger, we have a representative from the Department of Transportation here that can speak to that particular request.
Josh Rowan, Director of Department of Transportation, through the chair, there was an inappropriate effort to bid protest through committee last week. We have addressed this with DWS, we have addressed this with the Law Department. Right now, we're asking for time so that we can address this request properly and bring it back, so there's no rush on this item. We need to thoroughly address the items that were put before us.
Councilmember Fife?
Thank you. I would like to change my vote. I was concerned about not hearing the totality of information on this item. There was a lot of confusion surrounding it, understanding the explanation that we were given. I would like to change my vote.
Through the chair, to the city attorney, can I restart the vote over in its entirety?
Yes, the vote was not complete, so you can recall the motion.
So there was a motion by Councilmember Ramachandran, second by Councilmember Brown, to withdraw item eight from this agenda and reschedule it to December 2nd. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao?
Aye.
Councilmember Unger?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of six ayes.
To the clerk, since item 3.1 was passed over, can we hear that item at the end of the non-consent calendar? Under item four, thank you. To the city administrator, is that sufficient time to hear that item? Okay, thank you. And I believe that dispenses with item four. There were two modifications, one to pull item nine and reschedule to a future meeting, and the second was to hear item 3.1 after the non-consent calendar, and that dispenses with that.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to item five, which is the consent calendar. Starting with item 5.1, a resolution regarding the declaration of a local emergency due to the AIDS epidemic. Item 5.2, a resolution declaring a medical cannabis health emergency. Item 5.3, a resolution declaring a local emergency on homelessness. Item 5.4, a resolution regarding the Rockridge Bid Annual Report and intention to levy fiscal year 26 through 27. Item 5.5, a resolution for Montclair Bid Annual Report and intention to levy for fiscal years 26 through 27. Item 5.6, a resolution for a lease of airport warehouse for urban search and rescue program. Item 5.7, a resolution in support of California Assembly Bill AB 1243. Item 5.8, a resolution for OPD 2025 DNA Backlog Reduction Program. Item 5.9, a resolution regarding IMAX Technology Professional Services Contract. Item 5.10, a resolution regarding the Corridor Safety Ambassador Grants. Item 5.11, a resolution proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Item 5.12, a resolution for OPD Concorded Police Association's Fire Range Agreement. Item 5.13, appointments to the Privacy Commission. Item 5.14 includes multiple pieces of legislation regarding the purchase of asphalt paving materials for in-house paving and sidewalk operations. Item 5.15, a resolution to approve Oakland Fire Department Fire Staff Premium Side Letter Agreements to the IAFF Local 55 MOU. Item 5.16, Information Report on Equal Access to Services Ordinance Annual Compliance Report. Item 5.17, a resolution for the 42nd and High Street I-880 Access Improvements. Item 5.18, a resolution to establish the Right-of-Way Repair Fund. Item 5.19, a resolution extending no parking restriction at Lakeshore Cul-de-sac. Item 5.20, a resolution for a feasibility study for a potential San Antonio BART station. Item 5.21 includes multiple pieces of legislation regarding the 2025 California Department of Housing and Community Development Home Key Resolutions. Item 5.22, a resolution regarding Bonterra Tech LLC Contract Amendment. Item 5.23, a resolution for amendment to PSA with the Urban Institute for Grant Evaluation Services. Item 5.24 is an ordinance for amendments to the city's Conflicts of Interest Code. If approved, it will be approved for introduction. Item 5.25, a resolution for Community Champions Game Time Grant 2025 for San Antonio Park. Item 5.26, a resolution for OPD Enterprise Rental Car Contract Amendment. Item 5.27 is a settlement agreement for George Segura versus the City of Oakland. And your final consent calendar item is a resolution for a claim of Saba Grocers Initiative. And you do have multiple speakers on this item.
Thank you. Can we go first to the public speakers?
Also noting the arrival of Councilmember Houston at 9:12. Going to the consent calendar speakers, this is for item, all of the item fives. If your name is called, please approach the podium in any order. Please state your name for the record before beginning. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you. Starting with Ms. Asada Olabala, you have multiple items on consent. Dave Kurtz, Barbara Pine or Fine, Emily Wheeler, Sarah Rowley, Derek Barnes, Jennifer Finlay, Stephanie Warren, Quinn Edie, Pastor Joe Smith, Ali Obad, Zoe Janik or Janik, sorry if I said that incorrectly, Sarah Rowley. Top, I've got multiple cards in here. Mr. Hazard, and Rod Fujita, Joan Laman, and Diana Carell. In any order, please approach the podium. Again, if you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you.
Starting with item 5.7, oh, you don't have your clock up yet. It's not up.
It'll sleep. I don't know why it's not showing there, but I can see it.
I don't know how to pace myself, baby. Okay, we're working out. I'll do it. Go ahead. Ready? All right. 5.7, appointment to the Privacy Commission of Bryant White. If you look at his resume, he has expertise in technology. He has no reference to how he has expertise in handling the police officers, non-association with ICE or the Department of Justice. Item, the next item is 5.16, the Equal Access to Service Ordinance. Every year, this annual report to the Finance Committee never gives any financial costs related to translation and interpretation documents and so forth. It's supposed to be a financial report, but you do not report on how much money is spent on the Equal Access to Service Ordinance. The other item is 5.21, a need to report on what's going on with the Oakland Housing Authority. You are responsible for public housing and you're responsible for Section 8. You never hear from the Oakland Housing Authority what's going on. And you need to have a report out. You appoint members to the board, but you never have a report. The last thing is that besides these other ones, the city grant for $500,000 with 5.28, you never executed the grant and the matching funds. Okay, let's go to 12 of the 28 consent items that not go to committee. That means you approving them and you have no dialogue or interaction with staff, anything publicly about these items. So, information report on the Vision for 980 and 580. Now, you approving this and then you're gonna give the report after you approve it. You can't do that. You need to pull that item and then vote on it after you have the report. Annual report on Montclair Business Improvement. You've never seen it. Lease of Warehouse for the Airport, over $355,000. So you're gonna rubber stamp that for six years. OPD Backlog Reduction for DNA, that's $340,000. You're gonna rubber stamp that. You never looked into if it's done right. OPD Technology, $300,000. You never went to committee on that. You're gonna rubber stamp it. Carter Safety Ambassador Grant, $2 million. Who's getting the grant? Never discuss it. You're gonna rubber stamp that. OPD Agreement for $250,000. You're not identifying the source of funding in that one. Asphalt paving materials, $4 million. Now, this one is the one you're gonna have the way...
Thank you, Ms. Olabala. Your time is up.
Good morning. My name is Barbara Rhine, R-H-I-N-E, and I'm here on behalf of a thousand grandmothers for future generations, along with a broad coalition of a lot of other organizations that are supporting item 5.7 on the consent calendar. We're deeply grateful to city councilmembers Zach Unger and Carol Fife for bringing this forward, and we very much hope it passes. Oakland has, it creates a super fund which eight major oil companies pay into to pay part of the cost of all the pollution caused during the decades of their lying about the seriousness of the climate crisis. Seventeen other cities in California have already approved similar resolutions supporting it. It comes before the California Legislature in January, and we definitely need to know that there's a great deal of Oakland's support. I'm from Zach Unger's district. Every time I talk to someone in...
Good morning. My name is Zoe Janik. I am here representing myself as a lifelong Oaklander, third-generation Oaklander, and on behalf of 350 Bay Area Action, which is a climate justice group here in the Bay Area, and our youth mobilizing team, which is in strong support of item 5.7 on the consent calendar, the resolution in support of the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund. This is a wonderful measure to take, and thank you, councilmembers Fife and Unger, and thank you to the rest of the city council for hopefully supporting this resolution as it will support an important bill that will make a huge difference in saving Californians hundreds of billions of dollars and putting the onus on the companies that have caused the damage as it belongs. Thank you.
Good morning, councilmembers. I'm Rod Fujita. I'm a climate scientist and an activist with Indivisible East Bay. You know, 40 years ago, when I started my career, I documented the effects of climate change on the coral reefs around the world, saw them dying en masse, and I looked on it with outrage as the polluters who caused this massive environmental problem lied about them, profited handsomely. And now, the effects are affecting us all. All Oaklanders, all Californians are suffering from the effects of intensified wildfires, sea level rise, infrastructure damage due to these pollutions. It's high time that we stop paying the full cost of these things and impose equitable fees on the polluters who caused this problem. That's what the Make Polluters Pay Bill does, and I urge you to support the resolution. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Quinn Eid, and I'm also here in support of the Make Polluters Pay item on the agenda, number 5.7. And would really like to add that we've already seen a measure like this pass in Richmond, with Richmond being owed now money from Chevron as a result of their impacts on the Richmond residents. And it's really important, especially in this moment of rising climate change, that California's budget doesn't directly get impacted by the rising costs of protecting us from the climate destruction. So I urge you to support this resolution and help make sure that it's the fossil fuel companies that are held responsible for these costs. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Curial, and I'm here in favor of item 5.7, the Polluters Pay Climate Superfund Act. And Joni Loman is also here in favor, and we're both citizens of Oakland. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sarah Rowley. I am here to speak in support of Resolution 5.0, which is a feasibility study for an infill BART station at 14th Avenue. I represent San Antonio Station Alliance, which has a petition with 1,500 signatures in support of the station. We have support from local organizations like Tribe, Benny Basie, as well as several businesses and broad political support. We are in support of this feasibility study because this is the first step to bring such a thing to fruition. Not only will it be a station, it will be transit-oriented development, hopefully a green bridge that will connect our community to the waterfront and address the disinvestment that has been in our community for a very long time, since the inception of BART. This will be of no cost to the city. Bart, thank you.
Greetings, hope all is well to my councilperson and the rest of the council, Noel, Mr. Houston, and whatnot. I'm here speaking about the West Oakland Senior Center. It was supposed to be open over a year and a half ago. For whatever reason, it's constantly getting pushed back. And we keep telling them, the longer it goes pushed back, the more it's gonna create blight. People are gonna go in in climate weather. People are gonna use the building. We have $25 million worth of insurance. We can move them. We have trucks and trailers. We have the manpower. We're willing to pay for it. We just want our seniors to be able to have a place. And our senior director, who's been moved to North Oakland where we've displaced and misplaced our seniors, we want to be able to come back home. And please keep your hands, your staff, keep your hands off of our senior director. Thank you.
Sorry, to the member of the public, can I get your name for the record, sir? Uh, sorry, thank you. Teresa, thank you.
Good morning, city councils. Before you start my time, can I find out if every one of you guys got their packet? Before you start the time, please. And I have two speakers that yield their time. To me, Pastor Joe Smith and Taha Obad.
To the member of the public, there's no seating time during consent.
Good morning, city councilmembers. My name is Ali Obad. Dear Mayor Lee, President Jenkins, Member of the City Council, City Attorney Richardson. As a corporate owner of multiple stores, participate in the Saba Grocers Initiative. I respectfully request that agenda item 5.28, file number 26-02.9, Claim of Saba Grocers Initiative be removed from the November 4th, 2025 council agenda. Postponed, pending further review. It is both perduant and necessary that no council action be taken until the city auditor find in a fraud, waste, and financial mismanagement related to Saba-funded programs. Thoroughly investigated, the city auditor, July 1st, 2024, reports and related past statements, documents, serious deficiencies, including unauthorized payments, misuse of debit cards, and undocumented expenditures. These findings indicate systemic control failures and raise credible concerns that the program remains at risk of continued misuse of public funds. Given these unresolved issues...
Thank you, Mr. Obad. Your time is up.
Mr. Obad, your time is up. If there's anybody left in the chambers who would like to speak on consent, please step to the podium. Otherwise, we'll be moving to the Zoom speakers.
For Houston?
Kind of like stand away from the mic a little bit, Ali, Mr. Ali, I mean, when you're talking, so we can... I mean, when you're talking, so we can really hear what you're saying. Can you just elaborate a little bit more on it? And I wanted to say through the chair to the City Attorney, can I speak to this now that it's in open forum because it was in closed session? Can I speak to this and ask him a question and elaborate on something? Because I've got eight minutes on anything I want to speak on. I want to make that clear. So, so can I speak to, can I speak to this? Because it was in closed session, and it's out of closed session now?
Correct. This, this item, this is a settlement that the City Council approved in closed session on Thursday, October 23rd. So what would be appropriate to speak to is what is in the public documents in the agenda, the report and the resolution. This was a final action that was reported out of closed session.
Right. Now voted no on it. I just want to make sure. Clear.
Councilmember Houston, we're still in the middle of public comment afterwards. We will each get a maximum of up to two minutes to speak on the consent calendar, and we can ask the City Attorney more clarifying questions.
So through the chair again. So you're saying I've got two minutes?
After public comment finishes.
Okay.
We all do.
Gene Hazard, go to cleanoakland.com and look at that. Go to my blog, and you'll see the disparity study from Dr. Ramsey on the fact that black folks don't get contracts in this town, 1%. And you also, those who have disabled individuals, you will see all that, also that disparity study. Let me say this. I don't even know why this meeting is called this morning on Election Day. Where's the urgency? See, you keep violating your own rules. This meeting is a bogus meeting, and you knew it was going to be sparse attendance. Also, the January 15th meeting wasn't an illegal meeting, Madam Chair, because you said an urgency. You didn't describe an urgency. The council's going to be held the next day, and you went through the entire agenda. And I noticed you on September 22nd to cure and correct. You didn't do that, so I'm going to file the next legal action, which is a writ, because everything that you did on that date is void. And also, you've been properly served, Madam City Attorney, with the writ I filed on May 19th and on August 22nd, 25th, the supplemental on Measure A, that you said was a sales tax. You are illegally collecting a sales tax that went into effect on October 1. And you sit there with grins on your face, as though you don't know what I'm talking about. But you have 30 days from October 29th to answer that what you've been properly served on Measure A, the transaction and use tax. It's not a sales tax, Councilmember Unger. And when Councilmember Jenkins, on December 16th, in an agenda report, talked about a sales tax, well, why didn't he talk about that on January 9th, when you approved the ordinance 13833? It wasn't. So that wasn't a sales tax. It wasn't a sales tax when you approved Resolution 90740 on June 3rd with the state to administer the tax. Go to, and this, this should be pulled. This is real clear. Saba is fraud. Read the auditor's report, and you're doing this service if you--
Thank you, Mr. Hazard. Your time is up. Again, if your name was called and you're in chambers and you wish to speak, please approach the podium. Please state your name for the record.
Fifth Bay Cities, Ministers Baptist Union, we again, we again are sitting here, working with the city, doing the work of the city. But when it comes time for funds to go out, it looks like everybody forget about us. They remember us at election time. They remember us at every other time. But the churches are the ones that do the work, and Bay City represents 85 churches in the Bay Area. And so all we're saying is that you need to consider us and what you're doing when you had a closed-door meet. We actually not do it today and do it later. My church is in West Oakland. I hope you receive that.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, Council members. My name is Stephanie Warren. I'm a licensed general contractor and lifelong Oakland resident. I come from a proud legacy of builders, of builders in this city. My father, John T. Warren, founded John T. Warren and Associates and contributed to major public works projects, including the BART extension projects. During his era, the city of Oakland and its agencies made intentional efforts to contract with black-owned and local businesses. Those policies didn't just build roads and rail lines. They built generational opportunity. They allowed small contractors like my father to hire locally and train apprentices and young engineers and reinvest in Oakland neighborhoods. Today, however, those pathways, those pathways have narrowed. Too many contractor, contracts go to large outside firms.
Thank you. Your time is up. Moving to the Zoom speakers. If your name was called and you were online, please raise your hand so I can easily identify you. At this time, if you still wish to speak, please raise your hand. Jennifer Finley, I have you with multiple items. You will have three minutes. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Good morning. It is really unfortunate, to say the least, that this meeting is being held at 9:00 a.m. And I'm grateful, Ms. Sada, for bringing up that there were 12 items that were moved to the consent calendar on Rule 24. They did not go to committee. We've got 12 items now that are, have not been reviewed by the council, were not reviewed by committee, or not being presented to the public, and were given a short time on the agenda that was available to the public before today's meeting. This is part of a longstanding, if there's going to be a history of the Oakland City Council for 2025, it's this lack of transparency and this clear intent to avoid the scrutiny and input from the public by moving public safety meetings from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 a.m., from changing meeting dates, from making meetings early, from deciding that the public can only have one minute to comment for different things, to the more things go on to consent, people have less time per item. There are any number of reasons. This transparency is an ongoing issue. I'll talk about it more at--
At this time, I don't see any other hands on the Zoom, raising the Zoom cue. Again, if your name was called on Zoom or you were in chambers and you still wish to speak, please approach the podium or raise your hand on Zoom. Otherwise, we will be closing public comment at this time. Madam Chair, I don't see any other hands raised, and there is no one in the chambers at the mic. Thank you. Colleagues. Colleagues, questions, comments on the consent calendar? Councilmember Houston, I know you wanted to say something after Councilmember Brown. Go ahead.
Excellent. So just want to start off, thank you so much to the members of the public that came and spoke on various items. Thanks to the leadership of Councilmember Unger and Councilmember Fife for the Polluters Pay Climate Bill and being in support of that. I definitely am. Also, thank you, Councilmember Wong, and the Coalition from San Antonio Street Station. Looking forward to that feasibility study, as I've been supporting much of the efforts that you all have been making for some time now. And then in addition, I just wanted to uplift that any of the items that you see on the consent calendar, be it especially ones that are regularly scheduled for community and economic development, given on average, we've been averaging about seven to eight items per agenda meeting. The Corridor Safety Ambassador Grant, that was an item that we, we wanted to ensure we move forward with, as so many of these community groups have been waiting on this funding. So that was a priority. And then in addition, there is item 5.6. As with all items that are here, every council member has the opportunity to be briefed by staff to ask any questions, any questions. And so just wanted to share those things out, and so I'll happily make a motion on the consent calendar. Thank you.
Thank you, and I will second that. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Houston.
Make sure, through the chair, I want to make sure that 5.14 and 5.28, I say no on. I just make sure that's clear, and I'll vote the rest on the consent. And I did want to speak to, appreciate that, item number 8, 27th Street, complete street construction contract was pulled. I appreciate that because of the things that were said. Patricia, I want him to hear the things that were said about me last week, which I made a complaint to the Public Ethics Commission, and I just passed it around to you guys, because I don't appreciate things being said about me that's not true. So I appreciate that being pulled. And if I, like I am, I'm a new council member, if I say something that is not right or a little bit harsh, teach me. Show me, right? But I don't appreciate people saying things that are true to my staff. So I wanted to share that with you, and I appreciate that being pulled. The public will find out very, very soon what I'm talking about.
Thank you, Councilmember Houston. Any other comments or questions?
I want to just thank the individuals who came out from Make Polluters Pay. Barbara Rhine, thank you for working with your neighbors to organize this. I'm proud to support this in conjunction with Councilmember Unger. And I also think it's important that in this moment where we see incidents that are happening in Kingston, Jamaica, flooding, heat, fires, wildfires, all of the things that I've been trying to figure out how to work with community to hold these, some of these big polluters accountable for that we're moving in support of the state legislation. So I wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out for that. And I also want to register a no vote for item 5.14. There's some potential legislation coming forward that contradicts this, and I wanted to, my voice to be very clear on what's happening that's underlying this, this item.
Through the chair, can you repeat what your no item is, please?
Item 5.14.
Thank you. Okay. If there's no more comments, Madam Clerk? On the consent calendar, moved by Councilmember Brown, seconded by Councilmember Ramachandran, noting a no vote for Councilmember Houston on item 5.28 and 5.14, and a no vote for Councilmember Fife on item 5.14. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Guyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramach, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ramachandran. Councilmember Unger?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one excused Jenkins. Going to item 6.1. We need a motion to open the public hearing. There is a motion by Councilmember Houston, seconded by Councilmember Guyo to open the public hearing. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Guyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Unger?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
And Chair, oops, Chair Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one excused Jenkins. I'll read the title. Conduct a public hearing and upon conclusion, adopt a resolution requesting that the California Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation grant a two-year extension for the adoption of the updated open space conservation and recreation element of the Oakland General Plan pursuant to Government Code Section 65361. You do have one speaker on this item. Okay. To the staff, we can put up to 10 minutes if necessary.
Good morning, Chair Ramachandran and members of the City Council. I have a brief report for this item. My name is Lakshmi Rajagopalan, and I'm a Planner Ford with the Strategic Planning Division in Planning and Building. And our staff are here to request that the City Council adopt a resolution requesting the California Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation grant a two-year extension for the adoption of the updated open space conservation and recreation or the Oscar element of the Oakland General Plan. As the council is aware, the city is currently engaged in a comprehensive update of its general plan in two phases. And Phase 1 was completed in 2023 and included adoption of the housing element, the safety element, and a new environmental justice element. Phase 2 of the general plan includes comprehensive updates to the land use and transportation element or the loot, the open space conservation and recreation element or the Oscar element, as well as creation of a new infrastructure and capital facilities element and updates to the noise element. The estimated timeline to bring these elements for adoption to City Council is spring 2027. Senate Bill 1425, which was passed in 2022, qualified as Government Code Section 655, 65.5, requires all cities to update their, to review and update their open space elements by January 1st, 2026, in correlation with the city's safety element and the environmental justice element. And cities can request that the state, the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation can grant a two-year extension. The city's current EJ element and the safety element already include several action items that provide a strong foundation for demonstrating compliance with SB 1425. An Attachment A in your agenda packet provides the list of current goals, policies, and action items that are in these EJ and safety elements, and also address equitable access to open space, climate resilience. Requesting this extension will ensure that Phase 2 elements are updated in a coordinated manner, and this avoids piecemeal compliance or omissions across these critically integrated elements. So this is why staff is requesting a two-year extension from the state LCI. In conclusion, again, we recommend that the City Council adopt a resolution pursuant to Government Code Section 65361, requesting that the California Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation grant a two-year extension for adoption of the Oscar element of the open space, I mean Oakland General Plan. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Councilmember Guyo?
That information, I certainly enjoyed speaking with you and getting more clarity on it, but for the public's information, what is the financial, what is the financial obligation? But for the public's information, what is the financial, what is the financial obligation or the financial concern with the city of Oakland to make sure we carry through with this?
Sure. So this general plan update process kicked off in 2021. And as part of this process, staff did bring forward to council in 2021 a contract, a resolution to adopt, to approve two contracts as part of this. So we have, we are working with two consultant teams, a technical consultant team and a community consultant team. And it's all within the budget that's approved as part of that resolution.
But for 2026, what is the number that we're looking at? Because right now, we're making many investments, many concerns, but then I want to make sure we stay balanced and the public understands the money that we are receiving, whether it's from the county, the state, you know, where is that money going to be invested and how and when? And I don't want to show up after the fact like we did last year. And I've never seen the council at this level. We find out after the fact what we're doing or didn't do with the money that we were committed to use in Oakland.
Yeah. Through the chair to Councilmember Guyo, we are not requesting any additional funds or anything. So this is a resolution to request the state to grant an extension of the update that's already currently underway, which is already included as part of our budget.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Thank you, through the chair. This is really important work. Can you just clarify for us who are interested in land use updates or just as city council members? I look at ways in my district where I want to see zoning changes, maybe opportunities for mixed use development, more housing. How do we weigh in? What is our opportunity as city council members to, to, to help shape this plan?
Through the chair to Councilmember Wong. So the general plan update process includes an extensive community engagement process. But to your question on how can we involve city council members, staff will continue to hold study sessions with council at key milestones in the process. But independently, we can also work and hold community engagement meetings in your district, which we are doing. And the general plan update website does include all the events that have been conducted to date across the city, and that's a priority.
Okay. And just to confirm, this is the process by which if we wanted to make zoning changes, this would be one tool to do that?
So the general plan update includes updates to the land use element. So we will, we are looking at changes to land use designations or any updates to the land use designations. As part of this process, we will also be updating the zoning codes. So yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown?
Excellent. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the planning and building team for your due diligence on this item. We know that it's related to the Senate Bill 1425. And so basically, we're just, you know, granting that two-year extension to ensure that everything, we can, we can fall in line with everything as planned. And so I'm happy to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Thank you. Councilmember Houston?
And real quick, and adopt the resolution?
I'm sorry, that was, that was a motion. Okay. Councilmember Houston?
Yeah, through the chair, I just got one question. Between, what's the difference between Oakland, what is it, A, I mean, O-S-A-C-R plan and the state local open space? What's the difference between those two?
So cities are, by state law, cities are required to adopt and update their general plans and they have specific topic requirements. So open space, land use, conservation, recreation. And the city's general plan, we decided to include open space conservation and recreation or OSCAR as one element. And the state law requires us to update the open space portion of that area. So we are, since we are already working on a general plan update, we are, we are going to be updating the OSCAR element as part of this process.
So that, that, that requires a two-year extension?
So if you look at your staff agenda packet, figure one provides a timeline of when we are hoping to bring these elements forward to council for adoption, but we are also underway and we are undergoing an extensive community engagement process and we've held several events across the city. So requesting this extension from the state will make sure that we are able to adopt all the elements in a coordinated manner?
I got it. I got it. I got it. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. If there's no more comments, we will take public speakers.
You have one speaker on this item, Ms. Asada Olabala.
So issue of preservation, the issue of protection of natural resources, I'm sure is going to be in the plan. When you address funding, the source of funding, is there any obligation from the city of Oakland? Are all of this coming from the state, coming from grants? If there's an obligation for funding from the city, what is that source? That should be identified in this discussion right now. That's important. So when you talk about Oakland spaces, you're talking about Leon Canyon region, open space, King Estate, open space, now No Land Park, open space. You got Timmersville Park. And then are we all doing the exact same thing for all of these spaces? Or are there some differences? What are the differences? So I live close to the Leon Canyon region. My concern about that space, there is a lot of animals who are considered potential threats. There's coyotes, there's mountain lions, bobcats, snakes of different varieties. And I've been in there and I've had to leave because I've encountered some of these animals. What are the safety enforcement processes for encountering any safety issue in these open spaces? Who is the enforcement authority in these open spaces? Who is the maintenance, if any? You have to have some form of maintenance in these spaces. How does that happen? Personnel-wise, staff-wise, if any, what kind of staff exist in open space?
Thank you to our public speaker. Colleagues, I will undertake a motion or additional questions, comments, if you have them.
Through the chair, you just need a second. Councilmember Brown?
Oh, apologies. I will undertake a second.
I'll second that.
Another motion by Councilmember Brown to close the public hearing and adopt the resolution, seconded by Councilmember Unger. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Guyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
One more time. Councilmember Unger? Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one excused Jenkins.
Madam Clerk, before moving to the next item, because of some technical speaker issues, I would like to make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Counsel, Chair Ramachandran has requested a five-minute recess, moved by Councilmember Houston. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember, Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Guyo?
Aye.
Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Unger? Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes.
If council members are present, we are waiting for quorum to restart the meeting. Come be. The recess is over. It looks like we have a quorum on the dais through the chair to the city attorney. We will take a vote to reconvene, starting with council member Brown.
Aye.
Council member five?
Aye.
Council member Gao?
Aye.
Council member Houston?
Aye.
Council member Unger?
Aye.
Council member Wong?
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven ayes, one excuse showing seven members present. Going to your regular non-consent items, starting with item eight, which was pulled, but I will read it and we do have speakers on this item. A resolution awarding a construction contract to Regret Construction for the Twenty-Seventh Street Complete Streets Project, number one zero zero three nine seven eight, the lowest responsible and responsive bidder. In accordance with project plan specifications, state requirements, and the contractor's bid in the amount of ten million four hundred eighteen thousand five hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty cents, and adopting appropriate sequel findings. We do have two speakers on this item. Ms. Asada Olabala, sorry, one speaker on this item. Ms. Asada Olabala.
I am totally frustrated with the amount of money that is being allocated for bicycle lanes. Ten point nine million dollars to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety and accessibility for making streets calmer. Ten point four million dollars protective bicycle lanes. I just don't get it why this city spends so much money on that and we can't get the potholes done. And we can't eliminate the illegal dumping. We can't deal with our homeless community, but we got good bicycle lanes on the roads. It just doesn't make sense. Improve the crosswalks and curve ramps. Ten point four million dollars. Why you pulling it? And why when you pull it, I thought she said you're gonna put it on the consent agenda when it comes back. Madam Clerk, is that correct? Just shake your head, yes. It means you're gonna do something to cover up whatever reason you were bringing it to non-consent. This is, you, you do so much stuff that doesn't allow for the trust that should be existing, for the opportunity to say we going in the right direction. Somebody needs to stop this agenda of bicycle lanes. Look, look outside the door here with that mess that was created with these protected bicycle lanes. And we got the majority of the city being one lane, one lane. God help you people if y'all gotta evacuate folks out of this city with one lane and all the major corridors created so you can have your number one priority related to transportation is bicycle lane.
Thank you, Ms. Olabala. That was our only speaker on item eight.
Thank you. We do not make a motion, correct? Because we pulled this item off. Okay, thank you.
Going to item nine. A resolution amending and restating the council rules of procedure in their entirety in order to assure council meetings run in an orderly and efficient manner, allow for non-consent items to be heard earlier in the meeting, create an additional presiding officer position to serve as presiding officer in the absence of the council president, and make non-substantive technical edits. And you have about six speakers on this item.
Thank you. If K Top can pull up the presentation, please. Okay, great. In Council President Jenkins's absence, I will run through this briefly just for a little history and context. These amendments, the process to draft these amendments started about eighteen months ago. Much gratitude to the city attorney's office, the city clerk's office, and city administration for really trying to do a thorough job of seeing how we can bring these council meetings in a post-COVID era in a way that's efficient and effective for the entire city council, members of the public, and our staff. These are unprecedented times still, and I'm grateful that as a city we have made an active choice to continue hybrid meetings. Not all cities do this. And I think that's important. That being said, there are things we have to do to adapt given having these hybrid meetings continue. And changes to rules of procedure are natural, they're normal. And just running through the timeline, the first set of amendments in recent past was post-COVID, bringing back meetings into a hybrid format. Then was in December twenty twenty-three, which was myself, then council president Nikki Boss, council, former council member Triva Reed, former council member Rebecca Kaplan, and myself that authored the next set of amendments. And then from that time onward, in the December twenty twenty-three resolution, there are fewer as clauses that directed city council within six months to contemplate a second set of changes. And that is what we basically started about eighteen months ago, myself and Council President Jenkins. So all that to say, this has been a very detailed process. These amendments were first released in September of this year. We went through two different Rules Committee meetings to flesh out more details and, and receive feedback. And so the final version is in front of you today. Again, I've already stated the goals. I'll run through it quickly. We want to have reasonable time for input from the public and also input from our fellow council members and staff that have effective meeting agendas and some predictability in which key items requiring active votes will be discussed. And that being said, the first major, so this, these set of amendments have both substantive and non-substantive changes. The non-substantive changes were proposed by our city attorney's office and our minor, are minor details that will not affect the course of meetings effectively, but they are present and happy to explain the non-substantive amendments or elaborate on these substantive changes. The biggest proposed change is changing the order of consent and non-consent. Basically, this means that once the meeting begins, we will go straight to the items that require an active vote from council. Why? Because everyone's energy is brightest right at the start of a meeting and the public will have a better sense of predictability to be able to make comment on items that, that require an active vote. When a public makes vote on an item on a consent calendar, that's already on the consent calendar, and the most council members can do is register a no vote, but typically they pass. Versus non-consent items being at the start of the meeting expedites the process for having constructive debate and dialogue with the public rather than at the tail end of a meeting when we're voting on important items where our, where our ideas can in fact be influenced by, very much so by public commenters who are present. That being said, because the meeting start time is not, the meeting start time is not changing. It remains three thirty P M. But the requirement to have non-consent items start at five P M. will be eliminated so that all the consent items can start as close to three thirty as possible. Moving items off of consent. Now, this is, this was a proposal to require a majority of council members to move an item off consent rather than just a motion and a second. We have received feedback that some council members would prefer to keep it the status quo. And I will make a friendly amendment to remove this portion of the amendment and keep the status quo as is, that pulling an item off of consent only requires a motion and a second. Ceremonial items, this has already been our practice for the last several months of, of this year, that we are not going to have ceremonial items during the course of the meeting. Ceremonial items are still, can still be voted on. They would just be via advisory resolutions on the consent calendar. This does not take away from the ability of council members to be able to have ceremonies, either in committee when individuals might be on or groups might be honored, or in standalone ceremonies that will be noticed to take place in these chambers. They are just no longer a standalone item at the start of the council meeting, which has been our practice for the past few months unofficially already. This is a change to the unanimity requirement for non-consent. This is really just a clarification. Right now, the Rules Committee has say in whether an item is scheduled to consent or non-consent. This is not changed. The only difference is that the recommendation that goes to rules is currently the chair making a recommendation whether an item goes to consent or non-consent, whether or not the vote was unanimous. This would change the recommendation being the entire committee would make a recommendation to send an item to consent or non-consent. But the ultimate decision-making body is, continues to be the Rules Committee. And of course, all council members who are not on Rules Committee are welcome to come to Rules Committee to make their voice heard on whether or not they want to hear items on consent and non-consent. And just so, just to paraphrase the flow of how items are heard. Items are brought to rules first, then they go to a committee most of the time, and that's what we encourage to happen, not to go straight to council. At that committee, there is a vote made. If it's, whether it's unanimous or not unanimous, as long as it passes with at least three votes, it goes back to Rules Committee. And it's that Rules Committee that decides whether or not that item goes to the consent calendar or non-consent calendar when it's heard by council. So that is remaining the same. It's the recommendation that's taking, that's not just the chairs, but the entire committees that's gonna be the recommendation now. This is an addition for an additional vice chair for committees. This proposal will give committees the opportunity, but not requirement, to vote to designate having a vice chair for committees that members of the committee will choose, will vote on, not full council. This is especially in cases of absences of chairs to be able to maintain quorum and keep meetings flowing. So just to recap, based on the proposed changes, this is how the order of business would, would go. Meeting would start, regular meeting would start at three thirty. There would be a roll call. We'd hear modifications to the agenda. That means that's the opportunity where council members or staff can pull an item, can change an item from, can request to change an item from consent to non-consent. And we can modify the order of agendas too. That remains the same. Next, we'd hear public hearings on non-consent. Then we would hear other non-consent items. Then we'd hear the consent calendar. Then council member acknowledgements, announcements, followed by open forum and adjournment of the meeting. There's no change to the start and end time of the meeting. There's no change to speaker card processes. There's no change on the ability to hear items on an emergency basis and ability to hear ceremonials in committees and other celebrations in chambers. No amendments to the discretion of the Rules Committee. There are non-substant changes as well that do not impact the flow of meetings whatsoever that the city attorneys have proposed and can explain if, if there's any questions, but just cleanup language. And happy to take questions and comments. Council member Houston.
Through the chair, I just want to make sure. You said we're pulling the one that, we just have to have a second and then, okay, that's pulled, right? So let's make, get the one, number bullet point number six real clear. I want to understand about removing the requirement that committee recommends, recommendations that are not anonymous must go to the non-consent calendar. So it goes to rules, then it goes to committee. And then if it's three votes that says yes and one vote that says no, it goes to non-consent, correct?
Not automatically. It goes back to Rules Committee. So I have been part of votes, for example, where it is the vote on a specific committee, and this was last year, I have a very specific example in mind. Three of us, but three of the committee members voted yes. I voted no. The chair of that committee, which was not me, said we would still like to forward this to the consent calendar, even though I was a sole novo. We still chose, the, the chair of the committee recommended to rules to move that to the consent calendar. At Rules Committee, we discussed that item again. And the Rules Committee said, you know what? In the interest of the public, this should actually be moved to non-consent. So the item was moved to non-consent, and at the next meeting, we heard it at non-consent. So basically, the process is to change it from Rules Committee to, i- is, is the opportunity to change whether an item is at consent or non-consent remains at the discretion of the Rules Committee. And sometimes council members, I was part of the Rules Committee, so I, I mentioned in Rules Committee. You can, anyone can come in and say that item that got three votes, but that got a unanimous vote, that should still go to non-consent for such and such reasons, being in the interest of the public, blah, blah, blah. And that, that part remains.
Okay, so, so, so when it goes to full council, that means me and, okay, say for instance, I say I wanted to move it to non-consent. And Unger, council member Unger says second it, then it goes back to non-consent. So we just going around in a circle with that one. That's what that means to me. It's like, cause if I wanted to start it off with non-consent, then it goes to consent, then I go back to council for non-consent. It was just going in a circle. Can I, through the chair, can I have the city attorney address that?
Sure. This is Michael Branson, Deputy City Attorney. Essentially, there's an order of precedence for setting things on consent versus non-consent that moves from the standing committee, the substantive standing committees to rules, and then the council as a whole. So when the item is heard at standing committee, the current language reads that the chair may designate an item as consent only if the standing committee's recommendation was unanimous. So let me take that section first. So there's discussion at standing committee as to whether it should go on consent or non-consent that then is, is actually made by the chair, but can only be done if there's a unanimous vote on it. The next section of that, the next clause says, provided that the Rules and Legislation Committee has authority to make a final determination of consent or non-consent. So after a substance, after the item has gone to the standing committee, it then goes to rules on that Thursday to finalize the agendas. And during that section of the rules meeting, the Rules Committee can revise any of the recommendations of the standing committees to move something from consent to non-consent or non-consent to consent. And if I may, Council Member Houston, last thought. Then there's the final jurisdiction of the council as a whole. So when the council meeting occurs during the agenda discussion, there's an opportunity, and this is the subject of the friendly amendment, there's an opportunity for the council, a council member to request that an item that is on the consent agenda be pulled off and moved as a non-consent item. And the current rules provide that that is done based on a motion and a second, regardless of the council president's opinion on that topic.
Got it. So through the chair, so exactly what I just said. It just went around the circle. So, but you said something through the chair. You said "final." It's not "final" because "final" means that if it went to committee, it couldn't be changed. That's what that means to me. You said "final."
Through the chair, I said "final" with regard to the Rules Committee.
Right.
It's "final" in terms of what's agendized.
Okay.
What's printed on the agenda. But then, at the actual meeting, there remains that prerogative for a council member with a motion of another council member to remove that item.
So those two go hand in hand. So that's just going in circles, a waste of time, in my opinion. And like I said, I'm new. I'm new. Teach me. Teach me. Because what I hear is totally going around in a circle.
To councilmember Houston, this is something that came up, that's come up a lot in my now-three years on this body. The public's opinion changes on what is considered an item of interest. So sometimes, things pass through committees where they're seemingly non-controversial, and then someone, groups decide, "Wait, actually, this, we didn't realize that at committee, we want to have discussion and debate on, or we want to pull it." So it's not linear. It's not where something comes to committee that's automatically, if there's four votes, it goes to consent. If it's three votes, it's going to non-consent. Because these processes take time, people's, and even council members' opinions change on a lot of items. So I think having this process with multiple checks to be able for council members to decide, "You know what? We can change our mind now. We can change our mind again." It is important, because we're trying to make this a deliberative process, where it's not like we're deciding on the first time it ever comes to council. That's just my perspective.
Through the chair, I hear you. I hear you. I like that. But my main point is transparency. If one council member agrees to actually want it to be transparent to the public, and another one agrees with them, then I want the public to hear it, to be transparent. So I hear what you're saying, but that first one, that's first and second, let's pull that one off like you said. So I'm good. I'm good.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Onger.
Do we need to make a formal amendment to change back to the status quo, or you can just pull it?
Since I'm the author, I can verbally delete that portion, and it would restate to the status quo.
All good.
But please, parliamentary and.
That's correct. Whoever makes the motion can include that we'll be removing that proposed change, so it will revert back to the existing language, which requires a motion and a second to remove things from consent to non-consent.
Great. Thank you for doing that.
And to the chair, if I may, just, can I read in specifically what sections you're proposing to retain? So I think it's in Rule 7. There's a change that currently says for modifications of the agenda, a request with a motion and second from council members to pull an item from the consent calendar and reschedule as non-consent item on the same city council meeting agenda pursuant to Rule 8.6. And then, so then, there's a corresponding revision in Rule 8.6 that says that any council, it currently reads the rule, reads, "Any council member is entitled to pull a consent item from the consent calendar and place the item. On the non-consent calendar, as a non-consent item, if another council member seconds the motion, it is not necessary that the council vote on or pass the motion, and it is not necessary that the presiding officer consents." So that would be the language that's retained.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you for working on this, councilmember Ramachandran. A few questions. So just to confirm on the non-consent piece. So it sounds like now the chair has the discretion to make an item on the consent calendar, even if it's not unanimous. That's a key change?
The Rules Committee maintains that discretion.
Yes, they have the final decision, but now the chair has this next lever of discretion.
I will let the city attorneys explain the nuances again.
It is at the discretion of the committee. So the committee would include in their motion whether to recommend to place it on consent or non-consent. And if that motion passes with a majority of the votes, then that would be the recommendation. So currently, you would need four votes of the committee to place it on consent. Under the change, you could have three votes, if that's what the motion says, to place it on consent. That would be the recommendation that goes to rules. And then, it would be up to Rules Committee as to whether to proceed with that recommendation.
Okay. Thank you. And then, I'm hearing from some members of the public, too, just concerns around the ability to hear the non-consent items earlier than 5:00 PM. Can you just explain the rationale behind that amendment? Councilmember Ramachandran.
Yeah, so last week, the last council meeting we had, we had to take a 50-minute recess in the middle of the meeting, because our meeting time is remaining the same, 3:30, but then you can only hear non-consent items at 5:00. So we'd effectively start the meeting and have to wait around until the public to wait around before 5:00 PM, otherwise. So it's just at the start of the meeting. We're having business in the order that it happens.
Okay.
Letting that flow. Which could very well be 5:00 PM in instances.
And our staff are waiting around essentially during that time. I think, I had one other question, but I'm forgetting it, so I'll get back to you.
Okay. We will move to public comments. If we did, we do that already.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Chair. I appreciate this item being heard at a time where I could be present. I did have some concerns when it came to the Rules Committee with several of the amendments being proposed. But I think overall, what I'm hearing from the public is a concern about diminishing democracy and access to council. And so, the fact that our meeting, we are having far more special meetings than we've had in the past. The meetings are being scheduled for earlier in the day. One of the things that really stands out to me is the item that councilmember Wong just talked about, which is waiting to begin the meetings at, or waiting to have the non-consent items until after 5:00. I do want us to consider the fact that we move the start time earlier before people get off work. And my interest is having more public participation and not less. And if we're hearing consent items, I'm sorry, non-consent items earlier in the day, we run into potentially having less public participation than we should have. So I would like to have this body consider changing that so we can have the items that people really care about happen after the traditional get-off-work period at around 5:00, 6:00. So I wanted to talk, to debate that with this body to see if there was room for amendments in that particular area.
Thank you. Neither myself or my co-author, Council President Jenkins, are interested in that primarily because our flow of meetings is, we typically have a lot of items, especially in our busy months, which is around the budget, which is around the end of the year. Items are going to be heard way after 5:00 PM, even with the same 3:30 PM start timer. When we have a lot of items and an impacted calendar, our meetings are still going to go past 9:00 PM. And so, starting the meeting a little earlier does not necessarily change that. Also, we still have public hearings first. Typically, there's fewer public comments on our public hearing items, and that's still going to have to be first anyway. So realistically, by the time the items that people really want to comment on come in, it's going to be later. It's going to be later, as well as the consent calendar. Actually, even more than non-consent items, as the last several years of meetings have shown, we have the most number of public speakers on the consent item. So in fact, we're moving, we're increasing the ability of people to be able to comment on the item that most people come to comment on, which is the consent calendar. From moving it from 3:30, which is typically right when it's heard, to later in the evening after non-consent items are heard, we're actually increasing the ability of the public to participate without having them have to stick around and wait for the period of time and have the recess and all of that. So there's always going to be different interpretations, and I understand that. And there's going to be people in different sections of viewpoints on this that are going to be frustrated. And that is part of the process. How, again, not all cities even have hybrid meetings. We're making intentional choices to keep our meetings as open to the public as possible while maintaining our ability to debate voting on key items. I remember so vividly, we had to vote on a general plan update that had a series of amendments two years ago. That discussion started at 11:00 PM at night. And that's the kind of thing that we are trying to avoid. On items that are non-consent items, we want to be able to have maximum meaningful participation first. And again, the people that will be, that historically comment the most do come to the consent calendar, which will be way later than 5:00 PM in their ability to make that comment. So this does increase that ability. But I understand there will be lots of viewpoints on this. And we are always a city in progress, and our rules of procedure is always a live document. So if we take this as an experiment to improve democracy and improve creative output, maybe we like the results. Maybe six months from now, we say, "You know what? That was a good experiment, an innovative democracy and good government, but maybe we want to go back to the way it was." This is a live document, and as we've already had amendments since COVID, we can continue to have amendments. Councilmember Wong.
Thank you, Chair. So I remembered first just my question. On the vice chair for the standing committees, can you elaborate more on the process? Like, would it be initiated by the chair? Or can any member of the committee make a motion? How would that play out in reality?
To the parliamentary, if you want to explain the process.
Yes. So it would occur during the standing committee meeting, but it would still be agendized the same way any other item would be. So there would be an item that would go to rules, similar to the resolution that comes for nominating a chair of the council as a whole, where it basically says, "An item to nominate." And then, there's a blank, certain member to be vice chair. And then, that would be scheduled on a certain standing committee meeting. The significant difference is that the standing committee would be the final actor on that. So I believe it would be taken by a motion, not a resolution. It would be agendized as a motion. And it's at the standing committee's authority to choose their vice chair. It would not then go through the process of getting sent back to rules or going to the city council as a whole.
Okay. I think that's helpful. My other question is back to this debate on the non-consent piece and the timing of it. I think some of it, for me, matters on the logistics of public comments. So can someone only submit their speaker comment at the start of our, so at around 3:30? That's when they have the time to submit their speaker comment? And so, even if we have this now only at 5:00 PM, someone cannot, after work, at 5:00 PM, submit a speaker card at that point in time?
This, nothing changes the speaker card process to the city attorney and/or clerk, if you want to clarify.
Can we clarify what the current speaker card process is?
Yes. So it's in Rule 12 that covers the submitted time for speaker cards. There is a perhaps minor adjustment to extend the time for submitting speaker cards to be within the first two hours after the meeting is called to order, rather than the first hour and a half. Just, we felt was an appropriate adjustment based on the change of order. But otherwise, yes, you would need to submit a speaker card for a non-consent item within the first two hours after the meeting is called to order, or before the clerk begins reading in that item, whichever occurs earlier. And for the consent calendar, again, within the first two hours after the meeting is called to order, or before the city clerk begins reading the first consent item, because we treat the consent calendar as a whole.
Okay. I see. So.
And just through the chair, to councilmember Wong, just to clarify, and none of this would change the online speaker requirement? Because that is a different system. So that portion would still be 24 hours before the start of the meeting.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
We can move to, did I call another one? Public comment, yeah.
Moving to public comment. As I call your name, please approach the podium and.
Did councilmember Fife want to speak before public comment?
Yes. Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm trying to work out another agenda item. I appreciate the conversation about, you know, the two bringers of this item forward not wanting to change the consent start time. But I'm really, I'm really concerned about the public being able to participate fully, especially for working-class people. That the reality is, a lot of times, folks get off late. And the reason why I, that I've observed, why so many people comment during the beginning of the meeting is because so many items from committees get moved to consent that you have to have a number of individuals speaking on consent, because that's where the items are. Because, you know, things are moving from committee straight to council. And there are a lot of changes that have been made that are limiting the ability of the public to participate as fully as I think is necessary. And that's what I'm hearing from people as well. So I am going to make a friendly amendment to change that so that we are hearing our non-consent items. And I understand that there are two members of the council that don't want to do that. I'm asking for us to think deeply around who actually gets to participate and how, and why there are so many commenters on public comment right now. So I'm going to make that as an amendment. There are also other items. I think having a vice chair for committees. I have not heard from any of my colleagues. We're having this debate right now, so perhaps we can hear it. We can have some more debate around, is that necessary? To me, it sounds like, well, I would like to hear from you all around the need for a vice chair for committees. Because right now, as it stands, we can call each other and say, "Hey, I'm out sick. Can you chair this meeting?" I don't, I don't, I would need to understand why it's being memorialized in this way. My colleague to my left just left, saying that this feels very political. And unfortunately, councilmember Gao isn't here to express his full perspective on what that meant. But that is what I'm trying to understand. So I wanted to state that before we go to the public speakers, because, again, I think that is a deep concern for me. It's just the ability for the public to participate, particularly working-class people who are not retired, who are not wealthy, the people who are working jobs that find it difficult to participate in the public process, despite all of the rules and the barriers that make it challenging sometimes. I'm complete.
Thank you. Before going to councilmember Houston, just a note. I think the real question is, we're always trying to figure out, what's the best way for people to participate? There's, if you want to come to council to make comment on a consent item that's already on the consent calendar, you know you're making a public comment to show, to make a statement, not change a vote, which is important. I've done it. I've done it plenty of times before, being on council to make bold statements, which is part of our democratic process. But the people who want to come to make public comment on items that we are actively debating, whether that's a contract or a general plan, those are the people who want to influence this council's vote. And to make them have to wait till 11:00 PM at night, to make working-class people have to wait till very late at night to do that is inherently unfair. To make the people who want to come to this council to change our minds, not just make a statement, is absolutely critical. Once we hit that consent calendar, the most someone can do is register a no vote. You can't pull it off of consent anymore. That is how it is. And in our rules of procedure, the first round of amendments that I worked on with then-council president Boss expressly says, "We want to limit the number of items being ruled 24 to council." In the whereas clauses of this very resolution, we encourage council members and staff members from various departments to move. from various departments to move everything through committees. When I'm in the community every single week, I talk to people about attend committee meetings, participate in that. This is something that is important about how legislation is really baked and debated. So there's a lot of debate about coming to council meetings and when people can. But when you have, a lot of us have been here, a room full of children, and young people, and youth, and elders, waiting till late at night to have to comment on an item that will actively influence our active vote on a non-consent item, that is undemocratic and unfair, versus having it at the start of the meeting with a sense of predictability is, in my perspective, and the perspective of a lot of people that we've discussed over the course of these 18 months of this amendment, is something that is important, to give people who are coming to sway council's vote, a chance to be heard in a timely fashion that's not super late at night. Councilmember Houston.
Mine is just a comment through the chairs, that this relates to the encampment-abatement policy on the street. Walking down the street, phone calls, and people are just saying, the people that came to speak against it, don't speak for us. And they were business owners, they was residents, they said, why do we have it so early? And, you know, per my councilmember Brown, said, Ken, why are we having this so early? And I should have listened. It should have been a little bit later, because they are saying that it was too early for businesspeople, residents, and people that are working. It's just a comment from what my constituents are. Matter of fact, across the board, across, across the city of Oakland, not just my constituents. But that Zoom does make it really easier for people to speak, because a bunch of the business owners had called me up and said, hey, we're going to use the Zoom link, so we don't have to come down. That does make it pretty good. But that 24-hour before, sometimes people are waiting till the last minute to do it, then they can't speak, and I've heard that a bunch. So mine is just a comment on that process, because I thought 9:30 was pretty good until my councilmember Brown said, nope. So, so I understand it, so mine was just a comment.
Councilmember, did you have any comments on the vice chair item?
Oh, no, I really like that. I mean, no, I really, I really do, because just in case, like, like if the council member is not there, you are, are not comfortable, or maybe be feeling good, not good, and they, that person could take that person's place, or it might not even be that person's skillset, right? It might be the other council members, like say, for instance, it's like with me and Councilmember Wang. If it's about sideshows, she might say, hey, you know, you might have a little more experience on the sideshows for safety, maybe, I don't know. But I really like that vice chair. It's almost like being a vice chair of pro temp, you know? You have somebody pro temp at, at council, right? So why not have a vice? I really like that. So I approve that one.
Councilmember Fife.
I, I'm happy to hear from the public speakers, if you want to move on to the public speakers' chair. I, I will reiterate my amendment after we hear from the public.
Thank you. To...
Moving to public comment. As I call your name, please approach the podium, or raise your hand if you are participating via Zoom. Please raise your hand, so I can easily identify you. Brooke Levin, Ms. Asada Olubala, Mr. Hazard, and Ali Abad. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Hazard.
These are kangaroo proceedings. This matter should be kicked. You don't even follow your own rules. This meeting is illegal. Two, Section 28 of the Oakland City Charter outlines the rules of Oakland City Council's meetings. Special meetings, calling, special meetings can be called by the mayor, city administrator, or three members of the council. Emergency, the charter also addresses holding meetings and an emergency outside of place. You could only talk about one agenda item. You're talking about multiple agenda items. You don't even follow your own rules, Madam Chair. And Councilmember Houston, when you talk about transparency, and you got the unmitigated nerve to say that you and President Jenkins are not interested in what the public says. Councilmember Fife indicated what the public sentiment is, but you're not interested in it. You violate your own rules, and I get tired of that. And you sit up here, you talk for 25 minutes on some BS, and the rules are real clear. This meeting is illegal on its face. It's not a urgency meeting, plus you called for a, a multiple item. And you should reconsider 5.28. You could do that when Mr. Abad showed you the auditor's report on Sabbath. They violated and committed malfeasance, and you went along with it. Pull that item, reconsider that item. It's illegal, and you're complicit.
Thank you, Mr. Hazard, your time is up.
I, I just don't understand why city council members can't do, get in a motion and try to re, pu, pu, pull out the items from 5.28, when it's right here with the city auditor report. That shows there's so much fraudulence going on with this organization, and you guys are still insisting I've given them another $500,000, where they already, there's another million or two million that's already there, approved to them again. So right here in front of you guys, and you have it, the city auditor is right here, or you can call your city auditor himself, and it's right there in front to the public. So much fraudulence was going on with this organization, and you telling us, telling the public that you cannot pull it out of, to get a motion and pull it out of the consent calendar. This doesn't make sense. And if the city, if the city council keep giving away money like this to these fraudulent organizations, the churches are here doing so much for the city of Oakland, they don't give one single dollar. Where you got these nonprofits that come in front of you lobbying, and the people, Nikki Bass and Kaplan, were the ones that were pushing so much with this organization, because they were working for their, under their campaigns. So if this thing keeps going on, keeps giving out to this organization, I think we should get the Department of Justice to investigate the city council, to investigate the city of Oakland, and to investigate these organizations. Thank you.
It's quite insulting to hear the statement we're hearing from the public. When I come to just about every meeting and speak, and you never respond, but you respond to some hearsay public that's telling you what they need to have done, and you acting upon it. But the people that actually come to the meetings and participate, you ignore them. That's insulting. So you should have rules that say, under certain conditions only, items will not be allowed to go forward without returning to council unless there is a valid explanation. You should have a rule that says, every item that is funded by the city has to identify the source of funding. You should have a rule that once an item is approved, it has to be followed up within a certain time limit. I'm talking about Art Shanks renaming of the street, Art Shanks Jr. has never happened. You should have a rule that once you have a grant, you must all, all, identify all of the possibilities for which that grant be, can be used. That's because your staff is picking certain ways the grant can be used, but there are multiple ways that the grant can be used, and you need to understand that to follow up if you have another recommendation other than what staff is recommending. You should have a rule that all items that are under Rule 24 and Rule 28 has to go to the non-consent item. Okay? You should have a rule, all amendments that you make has to be presented before public comment. You should have a rule that states, that requires, that the mayor and the council make appointments to all boards and commissions within a timely manner, because sometimes you go years without appointing people. You should have a rule that you should notify...
Thank you, Ms. Olubala, your time is up. Thank you, colleagues. I will make a...
You have, hold on, you have your Zoom speakers. Moving to your Zoom speaker, starting with Brooke Levin. Please unmute yourself. Please put two minutes on the clock for her. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you very much, chairperson, Ramachandran, members of the council, Brooke Levin. And I only really have one comment, and that is about Rule 12, the 24-hour requirement for e-comment and for Zoom speakers to sign up. It was impossible last week, in the case of the published Rules Committee agenda on Wednesday at about 1:00 in the afternoon, and the meeting the next morning at 10:30. It would have been impossible to actually sign up for that meeting or make an e-comment on anything on that agenda. I was very thankful that the city clerk's office was willing to sign me up a speaker's card for that, but other than that, you could not sign up online. And I don't understand why there has to be that 24-hour rule. I think it's an impediment, especially in light of the fact that there are many, many special meetings that are extremely last-minute. Today's meeting, for example, the agenda was published on Friday, and that was the first time we saw the item 10, which is the next item, on the grand jury report's response from the administration. So that was Friday, and we had the weekend, and then we have early today to address that item. It's hard to get people to sign up, it's hard to organize for people. And additionally, I do agree with some of the other speakers and council members that having these special meetings popping up without, irregular times is, is very difficult for the public to track. So thank you for considering changing that 24-hour for e-comment and signing up, and also, you know, making an effort to have less special meetings unless there is something extremely urgent happening, because it is a burden on the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Moving to Jennifer Finley. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Hi, Jennifer Finley, District 2. I've got a few things. We really need to make sure that things are accessible. Of course, this means we need consistency, and we need the opportunity to speak. Later meetings, consistent meetings at the times that they are scheduled, it's, it's key. The public needs the information. Right now, we've got 12 things that went to the consent calendar that came through on Rule 24. The consent calendar is meant for things that are, came unanimously through committee, and were non-controversial. But Rule 24 is they are urgent, so urgent that they're bypassing committee. That's the obvious of unanimous. Nobody has had a chance to discuss it, let alone vote for it. By putting it on consent, listening to Chair Ramachandran, she's saying this is effectively a yes vote before, you know, you, somebody can wage a, lodge a no vote, but that's not going to change the turn of the tide. It's basically considered pass at that point. Anything with Rule 24 needs to go on non-consent. Also, what, some confusion about what things are going to which committees. It's very confusing to me still that the EMP or the EAP was assigned to public safety versus the LEC or Public Works, to frame it in that way, as a public safety commission. There are just too many things going to consent right now. The more things that go on consent, public still only has a very limited number of time. We don't get more time per item. That gets cut. We get less public conversation. Oftentimes, we will get time cut.
Thank you, Ms. Finley, for your comments. Madam Chair, that was the last speaker.
Thank you. I fully agree with everyone that's talking about, A, have fewer special meetings, and B, don't send as many items to committee. And these rules of procedure don't change any of that. That has to be practiced, that has to be decisions that we're making on Rules Committee predominantly to decide whether or not we hold special meetings and when items are sent to committees with urgency. I would strongly prefer that we have no items sent by Rule 24, but like last week, we had two committee meetings that were canceled due to lack of form. Departments requested to hear that item today on the consent calendar, so that they can be approved, so grant money can be received, so contracts can be executed. But that also means that as council members, we have to do our best to make sure that we have quorum for meetings, that items we bring forward go through committee first. But that has nothing to do with these rules of procedures, nor is bringing emergency, sorry, not emergency, special meetings. That is something that is the choice of council and the Rules Committee, and we can all work on having fewer special meetings and also fewer items sent to Rule 24, including departments. So I fully agree with all those commenters. That just has nothing to do with these rules of procedures. Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I just wanted to reiterate, reiterate my amendment to retain the existing orders of business in Rules, Rule 7, sans the change to ceremonials. I want to make sure that the consent calendar is heard after modifications of the agenda. And I also want to request to retain the non-consent item be heard no sooner than 5:00 p.m. I have been an elected official now in, in this body for a little over five years, but I've been coming to this body consistently for 11 years. Sometimes we were here, and not, this is not the model of how things should be, but it would be until 2:00 p.m., 2:00 a.m. in the morning sometimes, 1:00 a.m., midnight. That does provide a burden on, on staff, and it allows people who no longer get to comment, as one of our public speakers said, on every single item, but it allows the public to know that they can get off work and be here and speak to an item versus not being able to speak to it because they can't get here in time. And I also, I'm in community all of the time. We just heard public speakers, who I have no relationship with, express their concern with how all of these issues come together and limit the ability for the public to engage fully in this process. So I, again, want to reiterate that amendment to Rule 7. I believe that that will help facilitate what the public speakers who spoke today and the countless public speakers that I've heard over the last year do when it comes to being able to fully participate in these meetings. So I would like to make that amendment, and make that as a motion.
Councilmember Brown.
Okay. Well, thank you so much, Councilmember Ramachandran, and also Council President Jenkins, for bringing forth these amendments. And I do think that a lot of the feedback that we heard from the public is definitely important. And also, just, I think even in, in Rules Committee, we've consistently just kind of uplifted the fact of, you know, ensuring that we're not having so many special meetings at times, like at an earlier time. And so I think what my hope would be, is that as we are making some of these changes, if we can ensure that our meeting time stays consistent with our rules of procedure of us starting at 3:30 p.m. and, and being as close as possible to, you know, hearing some of the key items after 5:00. And also, at the same time, we have been operating in this manner for, for some time, and so I am interested to see how some of these proposed changes would impact the, the flow of the meeting. And so, you know, with that said, I, I don't have any amendments that I want to propose, but I do appreciate the amendment that was made to the, to the item that Councilmember Unger had mentioned. But overall, I think that the changes that have been made... But overall, I think that the changes that have been made, I'm interested to see how they will kind of impact the flow of our meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, just going back to Rule 7. You know, I hear the challenges that, you know, the tax that we have on staff time, but I do think about just rereading the logistics around doing the speaker comment that, you know, especially someone who is, say, working like a job at a coffee shop or something where they're standing, they're not able to make like a virtual comment, like someone who does an office job, that I think about. You know, I would say that either I second Councilmember Fife's amendment or if we want to compromise to make the limit so it's 4:30. That way, someone who has, like, submitted a speaker card, I don't want them to come to the meeting only for the item to already have passed and for them to have made that time to come all the way to City Hall or to submit a virtual speaker card. And unless there's an ability for them to make a retroactive comment, then that person loses the ability to say their piece.
To Councilmember Wong, I think I'm understanding your motive, but not the actual solution. So if someone who is working a full-time job wants to make public comment on an item for non-consent that we're voting on, that's something that currently, they're going to have to wait a long time with no sense of predictability when it will be heard, and they leave. I've talked to people from all over Oakland, not just constituents, about this. So one of the motivating factors for this were groups of communities who said, "We need predictability on when items are heard." And typically, the items that are up for the most contentious debate, where council members are making up their mind, are aspects of the non-consent calendar. That's not public hearings. So if we adopt these rules, we give people the greatest amount of flexibility after 5:00 p.m., but not as late as 9:00 p.m. for people that want to make public comment. Because right now, the issues that are really affecting people from all over Oakland, they're held at the later ends of meetings. And especially when things get, when our calendar gets impacted, that can be as late as 10:00, 11:00, and beyond p.m. So when we have people of all ages coming here to talk about renewing violence prevention contracts, which is an example that I remember very clearly, where we had youth here, a packed room of youth, who had to wait five hours to be able to be heard. Many of them had to leave. But many of, but if that was moved to earlier in the evening, after the not, after the public hearings items, that's going to be after 5:00 p.m. But it's the most predictable way to say, hey, between the hours that make most sense for people, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., that's only two hours of time where you would have to predict being able to sit at a council meeting, not come at 3:30 and maybe your item will be heard by 10:00. So I think this is in response to basically people who want to comment to influence our vote. The consent calendar, that takes up some of the most amount of time on our calendar for items that have no ability for us to change our vote on because on the consent calendar, which is to make a statement, and that's a powerful part of our democracy. I'm not, again, I've done that for years. But the people coming here who really want to come, the people who come for their first time to council meetings because they want to help influence our perspective, those are on non-consent items. And now we're going to give people a sense of predictability. Between 5:00 and 7:00 p.m., your item's going to be heard versus between 3:30 and 10:00, you might have to wait. So I think if your objective is listening to the greatest number of people who want to impact votes that have active consideration from council, these amendments are the way that we get there. And again, it is also an experiment, and we like to take.
So I am newer to council, only been here for a few months. I haven't yet seen one of our full council meetings go that late. In part because I think we've been doing a good job of, through the, you know, the Rules Committee has been doing a good job of putting many of, just saving only the most important items for the non-consent calendar. So I haven't seen that yet. I'll just say that. These sort of late-night meetings, I hear you. I don't want people who show up are frustrated and leaving, but I haven't seen that layout yet. And I do worry that this change may, I'm fine with everything else that's laid out, but I think this one piece, I'm worried that it could, it would do the reverse.
Councilmember Unger.
I think there are no perfect solutions here, right? If we hear the substantive stuff early, there are people who are going to be at work and not going to be able to make it. If we hear the substantive stuff later, there are people who are dealing with childcare or have to go to bed so they can get up early the next morning. There are no perfect ways to capture everyone who wants to speak. I do know that we, or let me speak for myself, that I am not at my best at midnight and if we try to debate the substantive items very late and make complicated amendments, I would rather do that when my energy is fresh earlier in the evening. I think that that is an important consideration for me. But I do acknowledge that whatever we do, we are going to leave some people out, and that's unfortunate. But we have to, we have to pick a time. And I also appreciate the comments about predictability. We, I like being able, people being able to come here at a predictable time for what are generally the most contentious and most important issues.
Through the chair. Brooke Levin had mentioned, and I had mentioned too, about the 24-hour to register for the Zoom. Is it any way we could change that as a council to make it longer or?
Through the chair, as I've stated before multiple times, we use a system that is outside of the city of Oakland.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We use a system that is outside of the city of Oakland to, for people to sign up to speak. When the council has regular meetings that start at 3:30 that are noticed via Sunshine, the members of the public have approximately 13 days to sign up to speak and provide e-comment. When you all shift into special meetings, depending on when you call the meeting, and when we have the materials to notice, we'll determine when the public can sign up. It may be only a day or two before the start of that meeting, depending on when we receive the materials. There is nothing else that can be done to, for, to correct that. If people are having trouble signing up, there are directions on the agenda for them to reach out for my office, to my office. We will sign people up to speak if they are having trouble with the system. But there's nothing that can be done about that.
Okay. See, that's what I need, clarity. I'm good. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Through the chair to Councilmember Wong, was that a second or is a friendly amendment to my amendment to change the time to? Yes, it's a friendly amendment to your friendly amendment, and if it gets turned down, then it's a second.
Understood. I do want to say, I wanted to also ask the clerk, because you were here on many of those evenings. We were here until 12 o'clock, 1:00 in the morning. From, to the clerk, do you recall any times in the last maybe year or two where we've gone until 2:00 o'clock in the morning, 1:00 in the morning? Or had these late meetings, intensely late meetings?
Through the chair, you've had many different iterations of your rules of procedure. As you guys have been in this 3:30 start period, you have not had meetings that have gone into the wee hours of the night. Most of the time in the past, where your meetings went into the 2:00 a.m. time period, your meetings did start at 5:30 at a time, and that is when you tended to have later items going into the wee hours of the night or the morning.
Thank you for that clarity, because I don't recall having those meetings, not in recent history. And again, I don't understand, and maybe I just need more conversation, but I would definitely like to move the amendment that I passed and see where the body stands on this. I don't see how this offers any additional predictability in that we don't know how long certain items will go. And I do agree with Councilmember Unger that, you know, someone is not going to be happy. I would just err on the side of giving more folks the opportunity to participate during the later hours after, as Councilmember Wong stated, if they have an office job or some other things. The consent calendar has been extremely overburdened. So it forces people to condense their conversations on substantive items to the consent calendar because of the things moving from the Rules Committee to, or bypassing committee, to come to the full city council. I would also argue that we can, agendas can be modified at the top of the agenda. So if we need to make changes because if there's an item, say, the youth vote that's on the agenda and young people come to speak at the top of the meeting, the chair has the ability to move that item up on the agenda so people don't have to wait very long. So there's already, we already have the capacity to do the things in here, and that, the scheduling is one of those items, and the better we are at rules, the better we are at our full city council meetings. So I feel like we're going around in circles. There's been an amendment. I could point out every single thing that's concerning with these rules of procedure, but it is a living document. They can be amended at a later date. I'm just asking for the specific amendment on Rule 7 that I made today.
Councilmember Brown.
And then I just had a quick question, because I thought that Councilmember Wong, I know you said that you're supportive of Councilmember Fife's motion, but did you change it actually? So can you just please restate? Thanks.
The substitute amendment, or whatever it's called, is to change it.
Sorry, just to clarify before you go on, Councilmember.
Yeah.
There's a motion on the floor from Councilmember Fife. Does that mo, and Councilmember Fife, perhaps you can restate it, and the clerk can correct me, but I haven't heard, is there a second to that motion?
I did.
Okay, so you're just seconding the motion without not making a substitute motion?
Yeah, I said, let's do this vote, I would recommend, and then if that gets, then I would like to advance the substitute amendment as a compromise.
Right. Okay. If Councilmember Fife can restate her motion and then Councilmember Wong can state on the record whether there's a second and whether, or if there's a friendly amendment, whether it's accepted by the maker of the motion.
I am making an amendment to retain the existing order of business in Rule 7 so that the consent calendar is heard after modifications of the agenda, and additionally requesting to retain the non-consent items be heard no sooner than 5:00 p.m. or 4:30 p.m. Sarah, oh, no. No, ma'am.
To the chair, just to get clarification on the motion. The 5:00 p.m. rule is written into Rule 7. There's also a line in Rule 8 that restates the 5:00 p.m. rule. So I'm assuming that your motion includes modifying Rule 8 as well to say 4:30? I'm seeing a yes to that from Councilmember Fife.
Yes.
It's a motion to amend the current proposal with amendments to Rule 7 and Rule 8.
Second.
I need it.
And I would now like to make a substitute motion. Oh, Councilmember Houston.
Yeah, I'm just sad that Councilmember Gao is not here, because I don't know if you guys is counting because there's six of us here, and I'm just hoping the mayor is available. Because I see a split here. This is what I see right now. So I'm saying this, I wish Councilmember Noel didn't say that this meeting was political. So that's what I wanted to say. We better see if the mayor is available.
Thank you. I would like to make a substitute motion to adopt these rules as-is with a friendly amendment that I think gets a little to a compromise of starting the meeting at 4:00 p.m., which would basically, given all the things that happen in the first hour, including public hearings, start public, start non-consent items by 5:00 p.m. in order to try to compromise between the two. Is there a second? I'm making a substitute motion to go back to the way it was written with the one exception of changing the meeting start time from 3:30 to 4:00. So we get closer to that 4:30. We're basically compromising between 3:30 and 4:30 by starting at 4:00. 4:00.
Second.
My amendments would, my substitute motion is adopting as-is the originally submitted proposal with two amendments. The first one that was discussed earlier, which is canceling the part about requiring majority to take the, an item, to pull an item off of consent to non-consent, keeping it as-is for a motion and a second. And the second amendment would be to change the meeting start time from 3:30 to 4:00. So that's a compromise between 3:30 as it is now and 4:30, which was the proposal.
Starting with the substitute motion moved by Councilmember.
Madam Clerk, does anyone need, does the body need clarity on either of the motions? If not, yes, you'd vote on the substitute motion first.
Starting with the substitute motion that was made by Councilmember Ramachandran, seconded by Councilmember Brown, to adopt these rules as-is with the amendment of starting at 4:00 and keeping the motion's second requirement to remove an item from consent. Starting with Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
No.
Councilmember Gao is absent. Councilmember Houston?
Before I say aye, this is just 30-minute difference from what Councilmember Fife said. That's all this is, 30 minutes difference.
If I, maybe perhaps I need clarity on them. I think the substitute motion on the floor is to change the start time of the meeting, which is currently 3:30, and move the start time to 4:30.
No, 4:00.
4:00. Councilmember Fife's motion was changing the time for the non-consent calendar? Or were you also changing the start time? Yeah, so, so I think Councilmember Fife, your motion was changing the time to start the non-consent portion of the meeting, not the meeting, not the start time of the meeting, if that makes sense? To Councilmember Houston.
So it's 30 minutes, that's all? Ask them first.
Councilmember Ramachandran's substitute motion was to have the start time of the meeting, the full meeting start at 4:00.
The reason I'm saying half an hour is because Councilmember Fife's proposal was to not, to still have the consent calendar first and not have the non-consent calendar first, which is, which is the biggest change of these amendments in order to give people a sense of when you can. a sense of when you can anticipate your item being heard, having non-consent items moved up. The real issue that was, is being brought up is when can people start to speak on the calendar? And that, as was discussed by Councilmember Wong and Fife, was we want people to be able to start speaking on non-consent at 5:00 PM, which is what we currently have. If we change the meeting start time to 4:00, by the time we go through the first few items of the meeting, as well as public hearings, the earliest anyone is going to be able to comment on the non-consent items is 5:00 PM. So it's basically the same start time for non-consent items, given that the first hour is all sorts of other stuff that start our meeting. So it's, so it's really getting to that same start time by pushing our, our meeting start by an hour. Otherwise, people are going to have to come in and we're going to have to recess and they're going to have to wait to be able for it to be heard.
Councilmember Houston?
I said move it, let, let, I want to wait. Let them vote first.
Do you have to state?
I can do that.
Mm-mm. Councilmember Unger?
Yes.
Councilmember Wong?
Not to be a pain, but I, okay, so the 40 is, can I do a substitute to the substitute motion for 4:15 PM? Because I think that is at least what I've seen with these meetings play out is what is needed.
For the start time?
Yeah.
At this point, there's a motion and a second on the floor, so that's what we're voting on. If the substitute motion fails, we will revert, if the substitution passes, then that's the vote and the original motion is moot. If the substitute motion, motion fails, we'll go back to the main motion.
You know, our meetings don't start till 15 minutes after anyway, but yeah, let them continue.
I think for now, I get where you're getting at, Councilmember Ramachandran. I don't think it's enough for me to feel, I, I like the solution only if it's slight, it is more delayed so we can ensure that people who get off that work can make comments. So for this, I have to vote nay.
Aye.
Motion fails with a vote of three ayes, two noes, one abstention, one absent.
One excused. So can we make a substitute now at this point?
So we're back to the main motion, which had a second. Is there, are you asking if someone can make another substitute motion?
Yeah.
Yes, if it has a second.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to move the start time of meetings to 4:15.
Correct, the substitute failed, but now, uh, Council.
That's what you asked for.
If I may, through the Chair, to the Parliamentarian, ask for clarity on what exactly is happening right now. We had a substitute motion fail. We should be going on to the main motion. Is there another substitute, substitute squared motion being made right now?
Mm-hmm.
For, if, if so, I, I need that restated on the record. I'm, I'm deeply confused about what is happening right now.
That was to you, I believe.
It sounds like there's another substitute motion on the floor. I have not heard a second.
This would be to the 4:15 start.
I will second this one.
Okay, thank you.
With another substitute motion on the floor moved by Councilmember Ramachandran, seconded by Councilmember Wong, to have the start time of the meeting at 4:15 PM. Councilmember Brown?
Are we having debate on any of these things? What is happening?
A motion.
Because this is, I'm, I'm, so, we want consistency, but now we're talking about moving the start time of a city council meeting from 3:30 to 4:30 to 4:15, but we're advocating for what we want is more consistency? I'm asking, my motion was to maintain the existing order, period. If we, if we really want consistency, that is consistency. But these games we're playing right now are ridiculous.
We have parliamentary procedure and we are allowed to make substitute motions, something you have done many times before, so this time I'm doing it. You can vote no.
Okay, relax. All I'm just asking is for clarity and for things to be restated on the record because this is abnormal, to have a substitute fail and, and then ask for another one for 15 minutes to change from a 3:30 start time to a 4:15 start time, to me, is, is odd. So I am ready to vote no on this substitute squared motion.
Councilmember Brown? Councilmember Fife?
No.
Councilmember Houston?
No.
Councilmember Unger?
No.
Councilmember Wong? You don't have to press the button, let me unmute you myself. Councilmember Ramachandran? Motion fails with a vote of three ayes, three noes, one absent, one excused.
I will, I have confirmed I can do this. I will make another substitute motion to vote on the original proposal. The original proposal, as is written here, with the one change being the request to change the taking items off of the consent calendar, requiring a second.
Say, I'm sorry, please restate your motion.
My motion will, my substitute motion is voting on the original item that is on our agenda with the one amendment of changing the ability to take something off of consent, requiring majority vote. So what was discussed earlier.
So the one, the one amendment you read as you were giving your report, the second?
One amendment.
Okay. On the substitute motion moved by Councilmember Ramachandran.
This is the original item that was before us with the only change was what I had verbally stated, which was taking out the ability to move something from consent to non-consent requiring majority vote. That's the only change.
Councilmember Fife's main motion with the second is still on the floor, so if the substitute motions fail, we go back to Councilmember Fife's main motion.
Seeing as there is no second for this item, we will go back to.
Oh, she seconded, sorry, I forgot to press it.
Can you state your second, say your second into the mic?
Yeah, I second Councilmember Fife's amendment on Rule 7 and Rule 8.
So you're not seconding the substitute motion that is on the floor?
I thought we already voted on that.
There's a new one.
The motion on the floor is to keep what is noticed in the packet and keeping the amendment that Councilmember Ramachandran read into record about keeping the language in your current rules of procedure that allows the item to be removed from consent, I'm, from consent with the motion and the second. That is what is on the floor.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not seconding that, I'm seconding the.
Okay, so you don't have to say anything.
Okay.
Okay, so is there a second for Councilmember Ramachandran's motion? Seeing as there is no second for that?
Uh, Councilmember Houston and Unger are on the speaker list, if either of you want to speak.
I'm, I'm in favor of Councilmember Ramachandran's motion, but I want us to vote on Councilmember Fife's amendment.
Then I will remove my substitute motion and we vote on that first.
Just for clarity, since we keep going back and forth for myself and my staff, Councilmember Fife, can you restate your motion one more time? Her motion was, she stated her motion, this is what Councilmember Wong seconded, for clarity for the public, so there's no confusion. Can you please state, restate your motion?
I'm not confused either.
I'll say it. It was keeping the status quo with Rule 7 and retain existing rules, including the removal of ceremonial items with the current language of non-consent starting no sooner than 5:00 PM. That motion was made by Councilmember Fife, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Brown?
Madam Chair, sorry, to Councilmember Unger, to your comment, this is the main motion on the floor. So if this passes, then this is the final action of the council.
Councilmember Brown?
I am in favor of Councilmember Ramachandran's measure as she stated it, but I think out of courtesy to Councilmember Fife, who put an amendment on the floor that we haven't voted on, I would like to give the option to, for us to consider Councilmember Fife's amendment.
Another Councilmember, I mean, that's the main motion, so if you vote on that, it's going to be final action. There's, Councilmember Ramachandran proposes a substitute, substitute motion, doesn't have a second. Another Councilmember can find another, you know, motion that they want to propose, and if that one gets a second, you know, you can vote on that first if you're trying to.
Is that it?
Yeah, that's correct.
We do need quorum for the rest of the meeting if Councilmembers want to hear the grand jury item, which we need to submit by November 7th. We will see if we can bring back quorum to be able to hear the other two items on our Madam City Clerk, Attorney, if you could just restate what motion we're voting on right now?
So I understand that the last substitute motion on the floor has been withdrawn, so we're back to the main motion, which was Councilmember Fife's motion. so we're back to the main motion, which was Councilmember Fife's motion. And if anyone needs that motion to be clarified again, please let the maker of the motion know.
Through the chair, I want to skip over this and go to the grand jury. I want to pass this over. Councilmember Fife? Let's just fail it and move on.
Order, we're voting on, we're voting first on Councilmember Fife's motion, and then seeing what happens, and then...
More amendments and all that stuff, man, it's crazy. So let's just, let's fail it and move on.
Councilmember Brown?
And then I guess just for clarity, when we vote on this, this go-around, no matter the result, it will either pass or fail, and there can't be any other motions. Is that correct?
No, then we can make a motion, if it passes, it passes. If it fails, then we can make another motion to consider what was originally agendized.
Through the chair to the city attorney.
Correct. If the motion passes, it's final action, and that version will be adopted. If the motion fails, someone else could make an alternative motion or some other motion to dispense with the item.
It's your motion.
Thank you.
On the main motion moved by Councilmember Fife, seconded by Councilmember Wong. Councilmember Brown?
No.
Councilmember Fife?
Aye.
Councilmember Gao is absent. Councilmember Houston? Councilmember Houston?
I abstained last time, abstaining again.
Councilmember Unger?
No.
Councilmember Wong?
Aye.
Councilmember Ramachandran?
No.
Motion fails with a vote of two ayes, three noes, one absent, one abstention, one excused.
And now I will make a motion to go back to the originally noticed proposal, with the only change being any council member can, going back to the status quo with pulling an item off consent. No changes to that.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Ramachandran to go back to the main motion with the removal of a majority vote for the, I mean, keeping the current language in the current rules of procedure as a proceed, to removing from consent. Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Fife?
No.
Councilmember Gao is absent. Councilmember Houston?
Aye.
Councilmember Unger?
Aye.
Councilmember Wong?
As I stated before, I'm fine with most of the revisions, but I continue to have concerns around the non-consent piece, so no.
Councilmember Ramachandran?
Aye.
Motion fails with a vote of three ayes, two noes, one absent, one excused.
Four ayes.
Still fails, four ayes, one no, one excused.
We've contacted the mayor's office for tie-breaking, however, and we're going to see if they're...
I'm sorry about the abstention, yes.
So I...
You can't go back to her motion. That has to be a reconsideration. You can't do it twice. Her motion failed. It has to be a motion for reconsideration. And you can't, can't, oh, I'm a chair, oh, fine on that.
Through the chair to the body. So your council rules of procedure, Rule 29, provide for a tie-breaking vote by the mayor. In the event that council members are evenly divided in their vote on an item, the item will automatically be continued to the next regular meeting solely for the purpose of allowing the mayor to cast a vote, provided that if the mayor so chooses, the mayor may cast a vote at the meeting at which the tie vote occurs this meeting.
Thank you. And to the parliamentary, what happens if the mayor opts not to? Will there be a reconsidered vote, or what happens then?
If the mayor does not break the tie, the item will fail.
Moving to item 10, adopt a resolution authorizing the council president to submit a response on behalf of the city council to the 2425 Alameda County Civil Grand Jury Report. You have five speakers on this item.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the city council. My name is Rose Ruble, and I'm an assistant to the city administrator in the city administrator's office. Before you're today is the city's proposed response to the 202425 Alameda County Civil Grand Jury Final Report, which is included with this item as Attachment A, which was issued June 20th, 2025. Each year, the Civil Grand Jury conducts investigations based on citizen complaints regarding local government and presents opportunities and recommendations for agencies to function more efficiently. This year's grand jury report included five sections, which detail investigations concerning the city of Oakland, and those are: Bad roads and no building. Oakland's budget problems mean no bonds for the city's needs. And I'll just note that this section did not include any findings or recommendations from the grand jury, so did not require a response from the city. The next is Oakland's potholes, a bumpy road and inadequate oversight. Oakland's poor stewardship of Measure Q funds jeopardizes its effectiveness. Adding insult to injury, Oakland issues parking tickets to stolen vehicles. And lastly, Oakland's wildfire preparedness, good vegetation management, but emergency access needs improvement. Responses to each of these investigations were requested from multiple city departments and agencies, including Oakland Public Works, Finance and Management, the Oakland Department of Transportation, Oakland Fire Department, the Office of the City Auditor, and the city council. Attachment B to this item contains proposed responses to each report section prepared by city staff. By default, formal responses to the grand jury report are due 90 days after the report's public release. However, the city requested and receives an extension of the time to respond from the grand jury's representative. In accordance with the extension, the city's responses are due by Friday, November 7th, 2025. Adoption of the proposed resolution will authorize the council president to submit the responses on behalf of the city council to the Alameda County Civil Grand Jury. And I'll just note, lastly, there were two of the grand jury report sections, the one regarding potholes and the other regarding stewardship of Measure Q, which contain findings and recommendations that were directed specifically to the city auditor. And so in response, the Office of the City Auditor issued a separate response to the grand jury report on August 7th of this year, and we have included that separately as Attachment C to this item. And with that concludes my presentation, and myself and department representatives are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council members on the grand jury report? If not, I have a list. Councilmember Houston?
I want to move it. I don't have no questions.
Okay. Okay, if there's not questions, I will ask a few. Is the city auditor available as well? Thank you. So this is really, I have two, I have questions on two items, the pothole one and the Measure Q item. Starting with Measure Q, do we, I'm not sure if this is for the auditor administration, do we have a clear definition of extreme fiscal necessity at the moment? Because I know that was a hotly debated topic, and I know it came to the Finance Committee last year, but there was not a final vote. Sorry, there was a different question for the auditor.
Councilmembers, Brad Johnson with the Finance Department. We have, via your adopted budget resolution, a definition that you adopted for extreme fiscal necessity. It was in your budget resolution. However, we have not formally adopted a, we have not formally adopted, and that was Resolution 90327 CMS. We have not done through our consolidated fiscal policy, adopted a definition for that outside of the context of your budget cycle.
Thank you. Were meetings with Measure Q stakeholders conducted to define this item? And is the resolution just to come at the next budget, or will there be others in between?
There are ongoing conversations with the stakeholders of Measure Q and our other ballot measures. I'm not going to prejudge the outcome of those conversations. But there's ongoing conversations around the different elements related to compliance with the local measures. And it's a component part of your fiscal roadmap that we have those conversations, and that we engage in a plan to come into compliance with them.
Okay, thank you. And then, next question is to the auditor on both potholes and Measure Q being part of the work plan for next year. There was discussion back and forth of whether or not KK or you even had an audit done, so some kind of clarity on whether an audit actually happened, and whether, or whether will be done in the future for both the potholes and, sorry, Measure KK and you, and also Measure Q.
Michael C. Houston, the city auditor. In my response, I clarified that I had, you know, I was unaware of any audits of Measure KK and Measure U ever being conducted. And it was not, that's not necessarily on our work plan either. Measure Q, it is one of those recurring audits that should be done on a predictable cadence. We've done one. It is in our 2526 audit work plan.
Sorry, to clarify that Measure KK and you was not done.
And I will say that that is not an audit that is, it doesn't require the city auditor's office to conduct.
Right.
It's vague as far as who should conduct it, but it is clear to me that it is to be conducted.
Thank you. And I guess to the administration, is it under the plan to conduct an audit of KK? Are you now, after this report?
Through the chair to the members of the council. So yes, certainly want to consider, you know, the auditing of Measure KK, and we can certainly, you know, convey that with not just our finance team, but also our external auditors that do our broad citywide audits of our financials.
Okay, thank you. And last question. What is the, administration, back to the potholes item. What is the holdup with the I-bond meetings? There is a note of, you know, there's issues with staff and vacancies. Is the issue finding quorum because there's too many vacancies that need to be approved? Is it that there's not staff ability to get the meetings organized? What's the biggest issue with not having those meetings be thorough and attended?
Again, Brad Johnson with the Finance Department. We are actively working to schedule the next I-bond committee meeting. We were trying to hold the meeting at their regular scheduled time, which is in the second or third Monday of the quarter, which would have been in October. At that time, we found that we were not able to make quorum of the commission members. We have conducted a poll of all the commission members for dates through the remainder of this calendar year and into the, in and around their, what would be their January meeting, to try to find a date where we can get quorum for the I-bond commission to meet. And we are actively trying to pursue that with the commissioners to ensure that we have a date where that can happen.
Okay, thank you. And just a comment on the wildfire item. I know the grand jury noted a number of issues with public education, and you need to inform the public more about evacuation routes and red flag days and all of that. I do just want to recognize that our fire department and administration has been doing quite a bit, but there's always more to do, so those aspects of the report are noted. And I think that goes for all emergency preparedness, that there's a lot more to do. But I do want to acknowledge how much has been done over the last, specifically 30 years since the 91 fires, on that regard of community education. Other, and last question for administration, sorry, I'm jumping around. Back to the potholes. 25-7 recommendation talks about, or the issue talks about prioritizing hiring for DOT. I did look at the website this morning, and there's only one DOT position currently there. What is being done specifically to help with hiring for DOT? The only one I see is transportation engineer, which I know there's a lot more positions needed to actually prioritize paving, because our city, we repeatedly state lots of priorities, but there's only, there's very few positions that are actually end up being prioritized on our website. So I just want to get clarity on what the action plan is for hiring.
Through the chair, and I apologize, there may be someone from Human Resources step into the mic, but I do know that the Human Resources Department did move forward with hiring existing recruitment staff to backfill some of those positions so that we can move forward with expediting, hiring, as this body has certainly directed, and what we like to do. And so I'll need to get, you know, further clarity with respect to the timing of when the priority hires will be coming forward, and we can certainly report back to this body.
That would be great. Councilmembers, comments, questions?
Yeah, is there somebody from Public Works, I think, for item 258? Do we have anybody from Public Works here? Yeah, I have a question about item 258, Director Rowan. This was about the small business requirements, and how, I believe in, the grand jury mentioned in 2021, we had to reject 10 bids for, because none of them met our requirements. Is that, is that still an ongoing issue?
Through the chair to the council member. We continue, just in general, to struggle with getting high turnout for our projects we put out to bid. And so we're looking at ways to increase competition. And as this body knows, we have had several opportunities to seek SLBE waivers on project awards, even looking at waiving the program for our ADA consent decree, also for our sewer consent decree.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wong?
Thanks. Through the chair to the city administrator. So there's a lot of findings, many of which that we agree with. Are there certain findings, like the implementation of these findings, that you think we can prioritize, or that would be easiest to address in the near term?
So I appreciate the question. I think some of the ones with respect to wildfire preparedness, I think there's, you know, quite a bit of allocation of funding and staffing and contracts that are in place. So I certainly appreciate that work moving forward pretty quickly. I would certainly say with respect to items around, you know, the potholes and sort of our public infrastructure, I think you all approved the item to procure requisite materials so that we can address some of those issues on the front end, but also as we move forward with our bonding process, that will certainly help us down the line. So I would certainly say all the items, there is a space in cadence by which we can accomplish delivery on these. So it's really just a matter of time.
Yeah, as always, time and resources. And then one question to Director Rowan, you're here. This is related to finding 259 around, so the jury found that we lack adequate control over change orders on our paving and street projects. And I think there is another finding later in this thing related to change orders again, and we disagreed with that finding. I am noticed as a member of the Public Works and Transportation Committee. And we disagreed with that finding. I am noticed as a member of the Public Works and Transportation Committee. We often wind up approving, you know, amendments, added dollars to our contracts. So how would you disagree with this, with this finding?
Through, through the chair to, through, to Councilmember Wong, that's actually a mostly accurate assessment. I would, I would give a big shout out to the, some of the folks on the Public Works team. About a year ago, we re-implemented the department's 2019 construction management plan, which actually has a decision-making matrix for how they get approved. There are still a few issues in implementation, but we have actually gone so far as to self-report ourselves to the city auditor and are undergoing an audit right now of our internal audit of our change order control process. So you will likely see more from us as we seek to daylight those and bring transparency to the, the change order issue.
Okay, I see. So you're saying we're actually going to see more of those coming for the committee, but it's only because of more transparency rather than more change orders?
So, so, you know, projects have change and we don't want to shy away from that. In construction, there are really two ways that you can approach it. You can have big contingencies and no changes, but you just pay a premium for your work. We're trying to be pretty, pretty fiscally responsible with our budgets, which means when things change, we have to do change orders. And so when, when they're of a large enough dollar amount, we will be seeking to be, as code requires, be bringing those back to council for approval and daylight those. And so we feel that we, we don't want to be afraid of change, but we need to be providing explanations for, for what is happening. And so you'll, you'll see, you will see more change coming from us just because on many of these projects, once we dig into the ground is when we really learn what's actually there. There, even when a project goes to bid, there are still a fair number of unknown unknowns that we then have to address during, especially during the construction phase.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Okay, we can move to public com. Is there anyone else on the queue? Oh, sorry. Councilmember Houston in five. Number five.
I'm sorry, is it my turn to speak?
I just called your name, so yes.
All right, I, whoa. Okay, through the chair to, to our city attorney. If I could ask a couple of questions about the grand jury before my, my questions about the DOT items. Who's, or maybe staff, yes. Can you give me your name again, please?
Rose Rubel.
Rose Rubel? And you're with the city auditors?
City administration.
City administration, awesome. Can you just tell me a little bit about who makes up the Alameda County Civil Grand Jury? And how are they chosen? How, where does this body come from?
Sure, I can speak to that a little bit and might need to get a little help from the city attorney on that. But my understanding is it's a citizen body and it's organized through Alameda County. It is, it's an opt-in type of process. So folks are solicited for their participation. And if they choose to then participate, it's about a six to eight month investigation process where they work with the county to they, they review complaints that are submitted by Oakland citizens or Alameda County citizens, I should say, and then select which investigations they would like to conduct based on the complaints that are received. And then spend a period of time, you know, doing those investigations, gathering the information, conducting interviews, and then ultimately release their final report.
And do they report on other cities other than Oakland? It feels like we take up a lot of their attention.
This year was a bit unusual in that five of the six sections of the report were all specific to the city of Oakland. That is in years past not been as common.
Well, I know they spend a lot of time talking about city of Oakland dysfunction. And I think that was on full display today, but that's neither here nor there. I will ask for Director Rowan to come to the podium. I just have one question about item 2518 because this has been debated for quite some time around the SLBE and our LBE program being a hindrance to being able to timely get paving projects done in a timely manner. And I know there's been a lot of accusations about why. I would just ask, understanding the recommendations and then the, the feedback that the city gave that the city of Oakland has mandated equity tools to ensure that our minority contractors are able to bid on contracts. How, what is, how do we ensure this moving forward? If they are stating that trying, for the city of Oakland, trying to make sure that black contractors, minority contractors, women get access to contracts. If that's a liability, I want to hear more about what we are doing to address it. Because I personally don't feel it's a liability. I think it's a city's asset. And I think we should be doing more of it, but want to hear how that jives with the grand jury findings.
Through, through the chair to Councilmember Fife, those are, those are excellent comments. And if I could kind of bifurcate my response a bit. On the, on asphalt paving, it's oftentimes very difficult to achieve any meaningful SLBE participation because the cost of the asphalt mix is so high. There, there, if you start doing the math just on how our program works, it's almost impossible numerically to make it, make that happen on paving. On concrete projects, we believe that we should be procuring more projects, smaller projects, and creating an environment where more smaller businesses can, can participate. We took the step last year of issuing an RFQ for an on-call contract for small businesses. And, and we probably need to do, address that again because we only got four responsive bidders. I was surprised at the low number. But I think we have, we have project types that fit more with, with those who are, are smaller contractors trying to get in to do the work with the city of Oakland. Those are mostly going to be the, the, you know, some of our, some of our sewer work, some of our storm drainage work, sidewalks, and, and more of your, your concrete flat work. The, the asphalt actually pencils out where we can't comply with those numbers because of just how the, the costs are distributed in a typical paving job.
Okay, if there's no one else, we will move to public speakers.
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. Please state your name for the record before beginning. If you are participating via Zoom, please raise your hand so I could easily identify you. Ms. Asada Olabala, Brook Levin, Jennifer Finlay, David Boatwright, and Mark Barach. Or Barack.
David Boatwright, District Four. The city council recess extension aside, given the grand jury report was issued June 20th with a 90-day response time. I believe the council owes its constituents an explanation as to why the important grand jury points are just now on the council, council agenda. This report has too many important issues that the city constituents need to know about whether a response by the city was ready or not.
This report was issued on June 30th of this year. And you were supposed to reply in 90 days. That meant that this report was due on September, the end of September. This is November the 4th. So I don't know why it wasn't done. You also have an interim, you got some issues with Public Works and you have an interim Public Works director. You have the person who's over transportation being interim. And if you're going to do anything, you need to have a Public Works director put in place. As it relates to the item that the report identifies failure to achieve wildfire prevention goals such as enforcing parking restrictions and communicating plan and evaluation routes to residents. And nobody asks how they were going to deal with those specific identified problems in the report. It said that the audit, it said that you have a housing and infrastructure oversight committee. It wasn't that they just, they weren't meeting regularly. It says in the report that they failed to produce any reports since 2022. And when are we, how are you going to deal with that was not dealt with today. It says that in the report that you have inadequate controls over construction change orders. What does it mean inadequate controls? It says that you have difficulty with getting approval to hire workers. I don't know specifically how that is dealt with. It says that the Oakland, the city of Oakland did not sell any bonds in 2024 due to its precarious fiscal situation, but you're selling bonds in 2025. There's a clear date in the report of the audit that says, I'm sorry, not the audit, the grand jury findings that says there's a specific date.
Thank you, Ms. Olabala. Moving to the Zoom speakers, starting with Mark Barach. Sorry if I said that incorrectly. Please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello, Madam Chair and council members. Good afternoon. My name is Mark Barish. Very close on the pronunciation, thank you. And I serve as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, which, as you know, has been granted oversight of Measure Q. And I'm just going to focus my comments just on that section in my remaining time. The city's response to the grand jury report just came out this past Friday after its extension. And, and it's really caused this process to be very, very rushed. And there's a lot of material here and many people are unavailable to comment or even study it in this short couple of days. So due to that, what we would request is that the Measure Q portion of the report be scheduled through the Rules Committee to be placed on an upcoming Public Works agenda so that we can have a more comprehensive discussion. That would be really beneficial, I think. In the remaining time, it's, there's so many line items, I'm not going to attempt to go through them. I'll just highlight one or two key ones, which is, you know, 2517. The city disagrees about there being no public discussion about the extreme fiscal necessity. The truth is, is that, that this thing was sort of jammed in at the last second to the budget resolution in June of 2023. A definition was created to meet the needs after the fact. It really never went to a proper public discussion. And indeed, there is a group working on the financial roadmap and the rules definition. That progress has been slow, even though we have an upcoming meeting, which is mostly focused on the financial roadmap. Lastly, I'll just say the audits are super important for public trust and for fiscal management. And I ask that the efforts be properly funded and that the results be shared transparently to the entire community. Thank you.
Brook Levin, please unmute yourself and begin your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Ramachandri, members of the Council, City Administration. I echo Commissioner, Prac Commissioner Chair's comments. I agree completely, 100% with all of them. Getting this agenda item with the administrators' response on Friday for this morning meeting has made it very difficult for us to spend time with our community for comment. And we would request that even though we know you're going to push this forward to submit to the grand jury by the Friday deadline that you now have, we would like to have full discussion of the Measure Q Public Works portion at the Public Works Committee meeting. The extreme fiscal necessity is still a very, very important item. Yes, we have had several meetings and we have another one. But the fact that it was in a budget resolution that was published on a Friday for a Monday special council meeting that no one had ever seen, it was never in any definition in any ballot measure, including the two library measures, Measure Q, Measure NN, which is the most recent measure passed that has it. And it wasn't in the charter change that affected the auditor's office. It wasn't in democracy dollars. And it was created after the fact when the city had a financial challenge to fit that need to not meet the maintenance of efforts in all of those other ballot measures, which are all put in place by the voters who have a trust in the city. And I know the city wants to put another ballot measure forward potentially for about $40 million. And what is there going to be that will endure the, the community's trust if you're not, you know, aligning with the requirements in all of these existing ballot measures that have parcel taxes? So there's lots of other things, as Mark said, and we would like to have this heard at Public Works Committee for discussion.
Thank you, Jennifer Finlay. Are you on Zoom or in chambers? Otherwise, at this time, all names have been called.
Okay, thank you. Colleagues, any questions or a motion? The motions are already made by Councilmember Houston.
I'll second it.
And just to clarify what the motion is to the parliamentarian, our approval of this item will empower the council president to jointly author a response along with city administration, correct?
That's correct. There's a resolution in the packet that authorizes the council president to submit a response on behalf of the full council to the grand jury. That response would be the response that the city administration drafted and that's in your packet as attachment B to the report.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Councilmember Houston. Councilmember Fife, then Councilmember Houston.
I didn't turn this on.
I just wanted to make a comment about our LBE and SLBE in 2001 that was adopted by city council. What's that, 24 years ago? 24 years ago, we talking about the same thing that we don't have the workforce. We don't have the companies. 24 years ago, we talking about the same thing. I remember this, right? And I'm reading here, let me pull this up real quick. I'm reading here, one city official estimated that Oakland could save 10 to 15% on projects if reforms were implemented. And then we're talking about saving money by not using and building our local SLBE and LBE. I spoke up about a contractor just recently, why one was pulled. And my voice was trying to be squashed because I'm fighting for the community that I represent in District 7 and Oakland as a whole has been underserved for so many years, 21 years, 21 years. My folks have been suffering. My contractors have not been, it's always waive this, waive that, waive this, that SLB, 21 years. Councilmember Unger, 21 years. Councilmember Wang, 21 years. I'm going to speak to each one of you. Councilmember Ramachandri, 21 years before any of us was on here. Brown, Councilmember, 21 years. Councilmember Fife, you brought it up, 21 years. This is a crime not to implement and embrace companies that want to help very, very, very small businesses to be competitors and hire individuals within our community while my youngsters, men and women, brown and black, are dying on the street because they don't have opportunity. But why? Because we waive the SLBE. 21 years. I remember. My cousin Darryl Carey used to say this, and I'm going to close it with this. If you're not mad now, when will you get mad? And I'm going to say this, I'm not mad, I'm angry.
Thank you. Are there other speakers? Councilmember Wong.
I just wanted to make a comment actually about the grand jury. I am on page 11 of this report. I got to say that, look, I don't know everybody's racial identity, but it looks like there's one Asian lady and everybody else is white on this grand jury report. I think the grand jury also needs to have some improvements to get more diversity. And I think, and that would change some of the viewpoints here in this report. So that's it.
Okay, no more comments. We have a motion, a vote that already begun. We have a motion, a vote that already begun, right? So do we have to start from the beginning?
I'll start from the beginning. On item 10, moved by Councilmember Houston, seconded by Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Fife.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger.
Aye.
Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran.
Aye.
Noting that Councilmember Guy was absent, Councilmember Jenkins is excused. Motion passes with a vote of six ayes. Are we going back to 3.1? Going back to item 3.1.
Through the chair, through the chair, members of the council, this particular item, we do have Representative Cameron Oaks from Caltrans who will be presenting this particular item. Come up here, sir.
I'll go ahead and read the item into record once again. Item 3.1, receiving information report on Caltrans Vision 980 and Interstate 580 Truck Access Studies in the city of Oakland.
All right. Thank you, Oakland City Council members, for giving us the opportunity to present today. My name is Cameron Oaks, and I serve as the Deputy District Director for Transportation Planning and Local Assistance for Caltrans District 4. So today, I would like to provide an overview of two transportation planning study efforts that we are conducting in partnership with the city of Oakland and other stakeholders. The first effort is the Vision 980 Study, Phase 1, and the second effort is the I-580 Truck Access Study. There we go. Okay, so the objective of the Vision 980 Study is to define a new and collective transportation and land use vision of the Interstate 980 freeway in West Oakland. Going back to the 1930s, West Oakland was redlined by the federal government and considered a bad investment for federal loans. However, despite that, the community was still managing to do very well. But then, as happened with many communities of color across the country, the community was selected for a new freeway alignment. The freeway in place today is a barrier to local travel as well as opportunity between West Oakland and downtown Oakland. And the Vision 980 Study is looking at reconnecting the West Oakland community with downtown Oakland and is considering all options. So the Vision 980 Study is divided into two phases. As mentioned previously, the Phase 1 effort seeks to identify a new concept and vision for transportation and land use along the entire I-980 corridor. Phase 2, in partnership with the city of Oakland, Caltrans will perform a more detailed feasibility and technical analysis of the concept or vision initially identified in Phase 1. Development of an evaluation framework to ensure the vision meets equity performance measures or benchmarks, and an equity assessment conducted in Phase 1 will be carried forward into Phase 2 and then future phases of the, of this effort. In terms of Vision 980 Study goals, these were the goals that were developed by the study.
I apologize. We have to pause. We've lost quorum. If any of the council members who have left the room could come back so we can finish this presentation. Or if their staff are present, if you can ask any of them to return the room. Thank you.
Okay, great. So these are the study goals that were developed by the Studies Technical Advisory Committee, community-based organizations, as well as the public. I'm not going to go read all these that they're here, but the, I think one of the main goals is to engage the community with humility to earn a meaningful and long-lasting relationship that empowers co-creation and collaboration from visioning through implementation. So the Vision 980 Study project is bounded by West MacArthur Boulevard to the north, Broadway to the east, Third Street to the south, and Interstate 880 to the west. So given the large geographic size and varied characteristics of communities within the project area, two sectors have been identified to create manageable planning areas. So the first sector, west of San Pablo Avenue, is where Interstate 980 is primarily a depressed or below-grade freeway. The second sector, east of San Pablo Avenue, where Interstate 980 is primarily an elevated or above-grade freeway. In terms of the Vision 980 Study Phase 1 schedule, here's the timeline. Existing conditions were developed, and the first round of public engagement was held or conducted between April 2024 and December 2024. Through that process, three potential scenarios were developed. An additional public comment was gathered to either enhance, cover, or remove the freeway, and that was conducted between December 2024 and July 2025. And these three corridor scenarios were then evaluated based on previously mentioned grant goals, as well as the equity performance measures, as well as public comments between July and this month of 2025. And again, a quarter concept or vision will be presented in the Phase 1 final report later this month, and will be carried forward into the Vision 980 Phase 2. In terms of, we continue to encourage everybody to visit our project website and sign up to receive ongoing information on the Vision 980 Study. You can feel free to contact us at this email address that's presented here. So now I'd like to, oop, sorry. Now I'd like to transition to the 580 Truck Access Study briefly.
How many minutes will you need?
Maybe like four minutes?
Okay.
So in 2019, the West Oakland Community Action Plan, known as the WOCAP, identified the need to look at the I-580 truck ban. So the WOCAP identified numerous strategies, almost 90 in total, including one to examine the effects of removing the truck weight restriction on I-580. Based on conclusions in the WOCAP, as well as a few local news articles at the time, the I-580 truck access will be studying the question, how will removal of the I-580 truck ban affect traffic safety, reliability, and throughput along the I-880 and I-580 corridors and achieve equitable public health for nearby populations? So the study's been divided into four components, first being traffic studies, then an air quality and noise impact assessment, a racial equity assessment, and a comprehensive community engagement strategy. The study also represents a working partnership between Caltrans, the Bay Area Air District, and the city of Oakland, and other cities and stakeholders. And the study's air quality analysis will be completed by the Bay Area Air District, and the racial equity assessment is modeled after the city of Oakland's Equity Evaluation Framework Tool. And both the air and noise assessment, along with the racial equity assessment, will help ensure that this study looks beyond mere traffic analysis and forecasting. So the map you see here, this is the truck access study area. The area, the study includes the limits of the current I-580 truck ban, which begins at Foothill Boulevard in San Leandro and ends at Grand Avenue in Oakland. And the study limits also include parallel segments of the 880 corridor, other state highways, and major arterials connecting 580 with 880. And additional areas of Piedmont, San Leandro, Alameda, as well as unincorporated areas in Alameda County such as San Lorenzo, Ashland, and Cherry Land are also included in the study area. This is our study schedule. We kicked off in late spring of 2025, and we plan to end the study in late 2026 or early 2027. On November 12th at 6:30 PM, we'll be hosting our first virtual open house, which will be on, which will be through a Zoom webinar. For those who cannot attend, we plan to record the webinar and post it on our study website. The main goal of the Phase 1 engagement is to introduce the study to members of the public that live within the study area. The second goal of Phase 1 engagement is to communicate the study's purpose. The meeting will go over the various study components that I mentioned, the timeline, and then dive into existing conditions data that we've collected so far. Afterwards, we'll have a facilitated question and answer period. To promote the open house, the project team has sent out meeting information on our listservs to, in English, Spanish, and Chinese. We've also begun posting media information on Instagram, Facebook, and X, as well as in the languages that I just previously mentioned. And the project team will continue to send out reminders about the meeting through our communication channels. We've also notified elected officials within the study area about the upcoming meeting. And lastly, we've been doing pop-ins to advertise for the November 12th public meeting through various city councils, committees, and commissions within the study area. So this is just the last slide of my presentation that lists the constant contact address where you can find information about the study and sign up to receive information about the study. We've also established a study website and a GIS story map, and you can also contact us by email. So this concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We've lost quorum again. Is Councilmember, oh, no, wait, no, Councilmember Houston is here. Colleagues, questions? Okay, well, Councilmember Brown.
Excellent. No questions at this time. I'm just grateful for the last slide that showcased the community engagement. Good to see that there's one date that is lined up. I am curious if there is a continued community engagement plan that extends outside of the virtual space?
Yes. So we are planning to conduct three rounds of public engagement. So in the beginning, midway, and then towards the conclusion of the I-580 Truck Access Study. So we will be doing both virtual and we'd like to do open house events as well, in-person events. We are very open, we're also going to be doing surveys as well during the process. So yes, very open to having a sit-down discussion with that. The first one is just going to be virtual to introduce the study and understand what people are looking for in the study, and so they understand what we're looking to conduct in the study.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Also, just wanted to say thank you so much for sending the supplemental information so that we could read through some of those items. I hope that also members of the public can also, who must be on the listserv, but just want to make sure that members of the public can also read through those materials as well.
Absolutely. We should post them on our website.
Okay, is there public comment?
As I call your name, please approach the podium in any order, Ms. Asada and Mr. Hazard.
So you just went through rules of procedure, and you violated your own rule of procedure related to this item. This item was on the consent, and you didn't have, it was Rule 24, so you've never had it presented, and you voted to approve it, and after you approve it, then you hear the report. Confusion, confusion. So this is supposed to have, related to 580, a racial equity assessment. There's never been a racial assessment, equity assessment, that has produced anything of change related to racial equity for African Americans. So why is this going to be different in this case? Because it's never happened. As it relates to 580 and the issue of evacuation, that is a main source of the Oakland Hills fire evacuation. Adding more traffic to that 580 is going to hinder the need to accommodate evacuation appropriately. Also, related to the West Oakland situation, where you say you want to deal with more sustained West Oakland. West Oakland has been devastated by gentrification. It's already been upheavaled by gentrification. Blacks have been pushed out. McLeimans High School is in devastation related to gentrification. And we have a council who has never dealt with any form of gentrification. It's in the report that gentrification is an issue. The city of Oakland has never dealt with gentrification's impact on the city. So just like racial equity, gentrification, they ignore it. If this is a component of the...
I'm going to speak to the procedural. And Councilmember Houston, I'm angry. I'm angry. Because even on the consent calendar, and you use Rule 24. So the matter is never discussed, and you had the audacity to come in at the end to have Caltrans to present this. The city attorney has set on the Mason Tillman Report for five years. But you go to cleanoakland.com and Jean's blog, I got it up there. And it'll go to Councilmember Houston's comments about waiving contracts. Goes to the issue of why blacks only get 1% of the contracts. And you sit up here with your pompous behind. Yeah, I'm angry. Look over your glasses, and you claim to be from law school, and you let all these violations go down. How dare you? Insulting to the public. Every single last one of you. And Mr. Unger, you don't even know what you're talking about. And Wang, you want to use, oh, the makeup of the grand jury, and you want to keep black folks who entitled to housing in Chinatown. How dare you try to...
Thank you, Mr. Hazard. Your time is up. Okay, we do not need a motion on this card because it's an informational.
You will need a motion to receive the report if that's the will of the body.
Sure, I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
With the motion as second, motion by Councilmember Ramachandran, seconded by Councilmember Brown, to accept this report.
But before I move to vote, can we, just some additional questions? Thank you.
We're about to lose quorum. Can you ask them offline, since this is not an item we have to make an act of vote on?
Are we, is Councilmember Houston about to step away?
I, I'm just requesting, if you're, if it's not pressing, if you can make your questions offline. So thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Houston.
Aye.
Councilmember Unger. Councilmember Wong.
Aye.
And Chair Ramachandran.
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of five ayes. Two excused and one absent. Your final item, you have council member announcements in open forum.
Colleagues, any announcements or adjournments? If not, we will move to open forum.
Moving to open forum, as I call your name, please approach the podium in any order. If you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Curtis Fleming, Jennifer Finley, Stephanie Warren, Ms. Asada Olabala, David Boatright, Mr. Hazard, Ron Muhammad, and Tony Cooper. Nick, maybe I can't see the last name that well.
And per rules of procedure, we have one minute on the open forum. Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to stop using that thing called people of color, okay? And you got to stop using it.
It's precisely the same thing as colored people, which is an insult. So if you're not willing to say colored people, you shouldn't be willing to say people of color. And besides, to me, the whole idea of color seems a bit specious, really. I mean, what should we call white people? People of no color? Isn't pink a color? And in fact, white people are not really white at all, they're different shades of pink and olive and beige. In other words, they're colored. And, and black people are rarely black. I see mostly various shades of brown and tan, and in fact, some light-skinned black people are darker than the darkest white people, I'm sorry, lighter than the darkest white people. Look how dark the people in India are. They're dark brown, but they're considered white. May I see the color chart, please? People of color is an awkward phrase that obscures meaning rather than enhancing it. What should we call fat people? People of size?
All right, stop using that term.
Thank you, Ms. Olabala, your time is up.
My name is Reverend Dr. Curtis Fleming, I'm Bay Cities Minister Executive, also a former Commissioner and Chair of the Safety Services Oversight Commission for the City of Oakland here, also SSC Chair for Prescott Elementary School and a local housing provider. I would like to speak in reference to the initiatives that audits have indicated their ineffectiveness. I want to also extend our gratitude to the city for its empathy toward the needs of the neighbors, but there's a couple of things that I would like to also say. If you're looking at design thinking, there's a couple of steps that are being missed when you, first of all, had empathy for those in food deserts, but you forgot a couple of things, and one of them is I appreciate your empathy, I appreciate the fact that you defined the problem, but you didn't prototype it, okay? And you didn't test it, you just went right to implementation. You need to make those steps available.
You need to do a motion for reconsideration on the 5.28, the SABR contract. The city attorney lied to you. You haven't seen any evidence of how much money SABR has spent. Yes, there was an initial agreement, but SABR ain't spent no $500,000. Have the city auditor to show you. The city auditor has already indicated that SABR has fraudulently misused the money even from the federal government. They have not spent any million dollars. You need to do your due diligence and ask the city attorney to show you evidence where SABR has gone into their pockets for $500,000. There's no evidence of that. Go to cleanoakland.com, Jean's blog, and you can see a Melston Tillman Report on disparity...
Thank you. I have a feeling you're gonna say something. I just wanna clarify that council does have the power to reconsider motions, and we are in open forum, and we can't do it at this time, but we can in a future council meeting.
Through the chair?
Through the parliamentary?
Because, can I, can I speak through the chair real quick? The city auditor works very, very hard, and this was passed in July 2024. And you know, like I always contend, I always say this to the public, I say this to my council, that I'm new, 292 days in, and I'm learning, and this right here is like ignoring the hard work that the city auditor put in, in place, and I would like to reconsider, but I couldn't do, can I do it after this? Can we consider the consent calendar to pull that item?
So your council rules provide that a member of the body that voted on the prevailing side of the motion can make a motion to reconsider. That can happen at this meeting or the very next meeting?
So it can happen, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. It can happen now or it can happen later?
It can happen at the next meeting.
It can.
But that, but not, not, so the council rules say a council member vote on the prevailing side of a motion or action taken at the immediately preceding meeting.
Okay.
So it could be your very next council meeting, or you could do it...
No, no, I wanna know that because I don't wanna hold up, you know, council members have other things, and I wanna be able to read this thoroughly and then digest with the city auditor to make sure the things that I'm saying is correct and accurate. So, so it's clear, because I like to be clear. My next meeting, I can reconsider this?
It has to be, the motion to reconsider must be made by someone who voted on the prevailing side of the original motion. So someone who voted aye on the original motion.
In closed session?
No, in today's meeting, at the consent calendar, 5.28 on the consent calendar.
Okay, okay, all right, got it, got it.
And so I believe you registered a no vote?
Right.
But everyone else here, we can talk offline, but there are options to get it reconsidered at the...
Okay, and that's what I like to do, on the record.
Okay, is there more public comment? Apologies.
Voted aye, but I will be honest, in that closed session, I felt rushed in that vote. When, when would the reconsideration need to be moved?
It needs to happen at the very, at your very next council meeting, or today.
Which is, okay, not today, but we have...
It can happen today or at the next council meeting.
Okay, I'll do that, consider that for the next council meeting, thank you.
Mr. Boatright?
David Boatright, District Four. In addition to AIDS, cannabis, homelessness, I recommend adding city finances, road maintenance, public education, and the need for audits of city operations as local emergencies. These additional issues affect a lot more city constituents than AIDS, cannabis, homeless combined.
At this time, all names have been called, I don't see any hand raised in the Zoom queue.
Thank you, everyone, the meeting's adjourned.